And you're all set now.
Muted.
Look at that. Thanks, Sam. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board meeting, May 17, 2022. All selectmen are present. We are in a virtual meeting. They call the meeting to order at 6:31. First order of business is reorganization of the Select Board. I'd first like to congratulate Mr. Stivers on a second term on the board, as well as welcome Ms. Cook to the board. We look forward to serving with you and a productive time while you're on the board. So that being said, are there any members that are interested in being chair for the upcoming year?
I have a nomination. I'm not going to present.
Nominations are welcome as well, Sam.
I would nominate Ms. Cook as chair.
Okay. Do we have a second for discussion?
I definitely want to discuss this.
Yep.
Don't don't vote.
No, we're not. Just a second, Kathy, just for them will open it up to discussion.
Well, I would second for discussion purposes.
For discussion. Okay. Discussion. Ms. Cook.
Um. This is not something I had thought about doing. I didn't think about even going on select board until very recently. Um. So I'm not sure I'm the best one for this. I would do it, but if the majority would prefer someone else, I'd still like to at least make a point as to what I think that the new chair should at least understand is expected from me and everybody else can do the same thing. You know, I'm new and I don't want to dominate this discussion, but um I just wanted us to get off to a good start. Um, we're coming off a town meeting where the select board did not look its best, and that's all I'm going to say. And I think we've got a perception problem that we need to face and try to do something about over the next year. So I think we've got a lot to get done. So I'm hoping that this new board will agree with that and make a commitment to really try to go in for focus on really big picture strategic things that this board is the only only entity that is basically obligated to do that. Not get lost in smaller stuff that take a lot of time. Let's let people who have primary responsibility for those do those. We can certainly provide oversight, et cetera. But I just want to get off to a good start. So who that person is, I just want, you know, if it's not me, if it's Chelsea, if it's AD, if it's Sam, I just want to agree that we really do need to sit down and have an honest discussion about what we want to accomplish and also the fact that we really do have some perception problems we need to try to to overcome. And I think the chair is going to have to lead that effort because I think it's important.
And I would chime in a little Lisa, in terms of the reason I made that nomination is, as I agree, we did not do well at town meeting. And I think that we need to think about some significant changes in terms of how we operate. I think, for example, things like the time we spend on meetings, what we're doing in meetings, I think we need to streamline that in a lot of ways. I think we've got, in my view, a sizable project backlog that we need to find ways to get things to the finish line more quickly and more effectively. And I think that all can reinforce public confidence in what the Select Board can do. And again, things like being more closely connected to various town committees, I think we've had some good input from various committees. I think it would be very helpful for us to find a way to touch base much more frequently with a variety of town committees to get input, et cetera, and to utilize the resources from town committees. The example for me is the Technology Committee, where I think we've got huge resource and a lot of input, and we've had some significant missed connections on that one in terms of the way we've spent money on technology versus the council we've gotten from Technology Committee. So I think we need to close the loop on those kinds of things as well. And again, find ways to communicate more effectively, more consistently, and again, deal with a broader range of, as Kathy suggests, larger issues versus what I think of as often small dollar amount kind of things, which which clearly we ought to be watching. Somebody ought to have responsibility for keeping a close eye on those details, but not at the expense of the significant meeting time and other things like, you know, for example, our audit report and OPED report, we spent a lot of time on those, for example, which I think are important, but finding ways to accelerate that process so we don't wind up in lengthy meetings in great detail for those kinds of things. So to me, that's more of a process focus. And then, again, my big issue is outcomes, outputs, how can we close the loop on a number of things that have been lingering for an extended period of time and basically get more done that the public watches and appreciates, I think, if we can close the loop more quickly. So and again, I, you know, I think there are a variety of ways to do that. But to me, whoever is chair, I think, I hope will have a strong focus on those kinds of issues. So that's why I made that nomination. I think Kathy is so a new view on this and maybe be able to get some of these things done.
So if I can chime in here. Kathy, I agree that in the, to start off, does require kind of addressing some of the I agree with what you said, right? The Select Board did not have its finest hour at the at the town meeting. I think part of that simply reflect, I think a lot of it has to do with the St. Mark's Street project and the fact that because of the unsuccessful motion to indefinitely continue, there was no affirmative case made for that project, which left people with this impression that there is nothing of value about it at all, which I think is not correct. So, I mean, let's also remember that I thought we had a pretty good start to 2021, and we had a, you know, I thought that the fall town meeting went very well. So I already started to in preparing for this meeting, you know, one thing I really enjoyed, the first time I joined the board last year is the kind of summer sessions where we set some goals for the next upcoming year. And I already started to write some down on a lot of things we mentioned in minutes, and we don't follow up on it. I just try to. So there's a lot of ideas that I have, but I agree, whoever the new chair is, that it's time to just take a little bit of a fresh approach. And a lot of it for me is simply because I've been on the St. Mark's Street working group has to do with making some tough decisions about that. But so with that, Lisa, I don't know. Do you want to have?
Well, I
Want to entertain any other nominations as well, or?
Yeah. So again, I'd like to kind of add my two cents in as well. So I don't disagree with some of the things that have been said, a lot of the things that have been said. And my comments are not reflective on Ms. Cook in any way. I think she's she's new to the board, and I think, you know, there's a learning curve to some extent with being on the board. I am certainly supportive of Kathy, and I appreciate everything she's done on advisory. And I've learned a lot of things, you know, being on this board through some of the advisory meetings as well. I look forward to the new year. I and and just unsure about bringing a new member on and starting them off in the role of chair. So unfortunately, Kathy, I'm not supportive of you for that role at this time. I mean, I would, I would certainly be supportive of of being vice chair. Again, just to get the time to learn the dynamics of the board and whatnot. So
Nothing is going to hurt my feelings here whatsoever. I truly did not, believe me. I just, you know, so AD, is this something you would want to do, or you just don't have the time? Yeah, believe me, I know how I know how much time this takes. So do you have the time to do it?
No.
Okay. So that leaves Chelsea, Sam, and I, right? Lisa, I'm assuming you want to break. And I would too. I just don't think you could over emphasize how much time being a chair of select board takes. I don't think anybody really appreciates it till they actually do it. Chelsea, I would support Chelsea being chair, but there's two. I mean, I know how hard she works. I know how smart she is. I know the time she spends, but I'm concerned about two things that are maybe more perception than reality, but perception sometimes is reality. Number one, also simultaneously being chair of Board of Health. I really wish that weren't the case. I wish she wasn't on the Board of Health, and I she may say same thing if she's doing it because no one else did. So, you know, it's probably not fair when I'm saying, but I really wish that were not the case. I looked at their agenda from yesterday. They've got lots going on. And, you know, every hour you spend there is an hour you don't spend on select board stuff. So I am concerned about that. It's not a deal breaker for me. And then, second, I'm concerned about the perception. You know, the biggest thing, or one of the biggest things we're probably going to deal with this year is the results of the work of the Nuri Building Committee. I think the timing is such that it probably is going to be brought to town meeting next year, assuming it keeps going forward. And, you know, Jason Malinowski is chair of that committee. So I just don't know what the average person in town would think about the Chair's Select Board being Chelsea and the Chair of that committee being Jason. And I'm not trying to be anything other than fair here. We want that committee's work to be respected, and we don't want someone worried about whether there is any bias at all, as far as everyone on the Select Board still being able to make a totally independent decision and recommendation, because this is truly the, you know, it could be the biggest building project we've ever seen in Southboro by far. Now, she's still going to be on the Select Board. Still that she she's not recused from being able to vote. We know that by now, but I'm just worried about that perception. So if I could get, if I could put those down, I know she can do the job. I think she, you know, heard what I said as far as what I want this board to focus on. So I am not unsupportive of Chelsea being chair. Sam, I'm not sure what you think about what you want to do. You've been on the board longer than anybody except for Lisa, so you certainly should weigh in here as far as what position you want.
Yeah.
Chelsea, Kathy, I'd like to have Chelsea respond first.
Okay. Thank you. And Kathy, I don't disagree with your comments thus far. Just one, one point of clarification on the Nuri Building Committee. I don't believe in the MSB program that that would come to town meeting a year from now at annual town meeting. I think it's two years from now, if that makes a difference for anyone. I don't think that that I think that is at least an 18-month engagement. So I don't know if that makes a difference for you or not. I think related to the Board of Health role, I would have loved to have somebody take the Chair's role yesterday when we reorganized, but it didn't fall that way. You know, I think my I'm very dedicated to moving that department forward and hopefully handing the reins off as soon as I can. And but I think we've made such great progress that people want to keep that moving forward. So I I don't disagree with with anything. I, you know, I appreciate that department and board's confidence in myself. But I think, you know, the the staff have really helped me kind of advance a lot of that, too. So they're very supportive over there, which has been helpful, but not, I mean, it is a lot of work on my side. I think in terms of the Select Board here, I think I am prepared and willing to be chair if that's what the will of this board is. But if the board is not wanting to go down that path, then that's totally fine with me, and I'm willing to do whatever I can in order to, you know, get our goals lined and work with, you know, whoever to move everything forward here. So either way, I'm, again, not it's whatever the will of the board.
Mr. Stivers.
Thanks. And again, I have great respect for Chelsea's skills and energy. And I think she's done great work on the Board of Health, and it's a very important job, certainly, as well as on the Select Board. And I continue to share Kathy's concerns, though, about, you know, resources and perception and so forth. And I've historically been less interested myself as chair, given that I have limited time, and I'd rather spend it on project things as opposed to administrative things. And I also, I guess, respectfully disagree, Lisa, that I think Kathy's history with the town and advisory positions her to step in and be an effective chair here. And I don't have any qualms about her, you know, ability or capabilities to actually do that effectively, and particularly, again, with, you know, support of Mark and others, seems to me that's certainly a possibility. So, you know, I guess I remain, as I did last year, interested in the position of vice chair, but that comes later. So again, I continue to believe that Kathy is the best choice at this time for that role.
Okay. Andrew.
Um, yeah. So first of the two issues that you addressed, Kathy, I don't share as much the concern about capital planning committee and the Select Board, but I wasn't, I do share your concern about, you know, that you should have a different share of the Board of Health than than the Select Board. And so I think for all for those, all those things considered, and this is a very difficult decision, but for me, frankly, I did not know about the the chair of the Board of Health thing until you, you know, you had just mentioned that. But I think for, I also don't, Kathy, I know we worked together on the Advisory Committee before. So I think for all those reasons, I would be supportive of Kathy as the chair. And I, I mean, frankly, I it really has a lot to do with simply with, I just don't think you can be both the chair of the Select Board and the Board of Health at the same time. And I know that it's it's hard to manage, and it's tremendous. I have a tremendous amount of respect for Chelsea for doing both. It's just, I just don't think you can be chair of both at the same time.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Roll call vote. Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Dennyton.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Ms. Brascio. Aye. All right. Kathy, I turn it over to you. I'm sorry. She may. I apologize, Kathy.
I will abstain.
Okay. I will turn it over to you for reorganization of the Board with Vice Chair.
So this is official at this moment?
Yep.
It is. All right, Lisa, you're going to have to help me get to the meeting because I didn't expect this. Okay. Is there a nomination for Vice Chair?
Can we hear who is interested? I mean, I'm interested. On the other hand, I'm also interested in who else was interested in taking it on.
Like, like I said in my previous statement, I'm happy to help with whatever position the will of the board is, and I would be happy to help in this position as well. So again, I, I, I don't, I don't care one way or the other, but I'm happy to do it.
AD, any interest in this one?
Um, I think I'm going to nominate Chelsea for Vice Chair.
Second.
Second, that also.
Any further discussion as far as Chelsea's nomination for Vice Chair? Okay, roll call vote. Lisa?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
AD?
Aye.
Chelsea?
I'm staying.
Cook is aye. So four zero one.
We have a hand up, two hands up in the audience, actually.
Is that Sam?
We have two hands up in the audience. I guess that's her public comment coming up here.
I don't know about you guys, but I'm having a little trouble hearing Sam. I can hear him, but it's, I'm having to listen hard. I don't know if your volume, if it's me or if it's your volume.
I'll turn the volume up some.
Okay. So again, Lisa, I would appreciate your assistance getting through tonight. I was not prepared for this. Okay. So it looks like public comment is next. And we've got two people who have their hands up. So Denise and Mr. Milo.
I was just trying to get in before. I was having a hard time. So I have no comment. Denise Eddie.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Milo.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to highlight, is this the first time we have a chair and vice chair that are female women in town?
Okay, that's it?
Is it? Well, I'm a father of daughter, so I just like that the women are taking over.
Last year, I'm not sure that's true, but
appropriately.
Last year, the chair and vice chair were also women.
So what's different this year is there's three women. There's a majority is women. That's what's different. And so I think that's worth recognizing. We have two excellent men on this, too, though. So I think we will get a lot done. Okay. So thank you, Mr. Milo. Okay, so scheduled appointments are next. So we've got the hearing for the new liquor license at 359 Turnpike Road.
Kathy typically mark reads the hearing notice.
Okay.
This is an FYI.
Oh, please, FYI all night long, Lisa, because I don't know that.
So notice is given is hereby given under chapter 138 of the Mass General Laws that Nans Market South LLC DBA Nans Market, Jordan Mackey, manager, has applied for a package store wine and malt beverages license on the premises located at 359 Turnpike Road, Southboro, Mass, described as approximately 3300 square feet with three beer fridges, two wine fridges, multiple wine racks, 14 seats, drive-through for pickup of food, retail food and coffee items on shelving, and counter service for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. Southboro Select Board will hold a public hearing Tuesday, May 17, at 6:30 PM in the McCallum Hearing Room, Southboro Townhouse, 17 Common Street, virtually through a link located as www.southborotown.com backslash remote meetings. All interested parties are encouraged to view and/or participate.
Thank you. Um, is the applicant here?
Yep, Mr. Mackey was just brought into the room.
Okay, there he is. Hi, Mr. Mackey, welcome.
It's a pleasure, pleasure to meet you all.
So I am the newly elected chair and am doing this for the first time. So I'm asking for assistance from the most recent chair as far as what to do next, which is I assume go around the room and ask questions. And we've all got the application in front of us. And this board has done many times, so I'm assuming that we're familiar with what needs to be done now. So Lisa?
Kathy, typically, we just allow him to introduce himself and tell us a little bit about his application and, you know, what he's planning to do in Southboro, and then open it up to the board. So you're definitely on the right path.
All right. So, hi, Mr. Mackey. So why don't you take it from here and let us know about your background? I see that you're going to be the liquor manager. And tell us what you want us to know.
Sure. One, we're very excited to have an opportunity to open our second location of Nans Market in in Southboro. It was a startup we opened in 2020 during the pandemic. It's kind of a pivot from full-service restaurant, and it really got embraced by the community. So it's a counter-service restaurant like you'd see in the city, like Sweet Green, or, you know, that kind of thing, all takeout. We do a few seats for people to sit during lunch, total of 14 seats, coffee and breakfast during the morning, the switch into healthy grain bowls, and signature fried chicken sandwich. It's kind of our thing at lunch and at dinner, we start frying bone-in fried chicken. And the accompanying market space is craft beer available to build your own four-pack. So we we offer the craft beer loose, which is like a cool variety to mix and match. We specialize in organics, sustainable, and biodynamic wines, and well-appointed local Massachusetts products. So we get hot sauces from craft producers in Lowell. We also feature all of our coffees from local Massachusetts roasters, ranging from orange to Beverly all over. We kind of have a little collective, about 14, 15 different local roasters that rotate through our espresso program, you know, for lattes to drink, as well as selling the beans retail. We also offer cold salads and grab-and-go items, beverages, many, many, much on the healthier side, aside from fried chicken and biscuits. A lot of our retail items are really mindfully sourced and that type of thing. So that's a little snapshot of what it's like to come to Nans. We have one in the stove for almost two years. I don't know if any of you have been up to see our spot up in stove, but if you if you have, you'll know what I'm talking about.
Okay. So the way I do meetings is I call on people in the order I see them on the screen, and I know people jump around. So that's what I'm going to do tonight until I really let this sink in. So Lisa, start with you.
Great. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. McKay. It's a pleasure to meet you. Welcome to Southboro. When do you, when is your anticipated opening date?
We're shooting for the second Monday in July. We'll see, you know, things really happen on time, you know, so it's a little tight for us. Our time between application and appearing for you guys is very long. So we're hoping that the state can speed it up, but sometime in July for sure.
Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome to Southboro. That's it for me, Kathy. Thank you.
Sam?
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Mackey. Always great to see a new business come into town. And for folks who may not be fully up to speed on this, this this location is where Wendy's previously was on Route Nine, correct? And so is there going to be any drive-through service there?
Yeah, we're going to utilize the drive-through to service kind of curbside. A huge percentage of our business, it's all takeout. So we're going to use it to allow people to not get out of their cars to pick up takeout like they do in store. There won't be any ordering or paying or transacting in the drive-through lane. So it'll flow very smoothly and quickly, which is which is our plan.
Just pickup. And you mentioned the timeline here. If there are things that the town can be helpful with in terms of supporting you in that process, please feel free to let us know.
Thank you.
Eager to try to make that a smooth process. I know there may be other state things you'd mentioned, but we can't influence that much. But from the standpoint of our either, you know, local boards, et cetera, we'd be happy to try to be helpful there. So
Thank you.
Welcome to town and that's for a very successful venture. Thank you.
All right. AD?
Hi, Mr. Mackey. I'm very excited about your business coming to town and also as a consumer looking for some, I'm probably going to be one of your customers.
Everybody's got to eat.
Yeah. But a couple of questions I saw based on your application. One is the opening hours. I saw your hours of operation begin at 6:30. So and this is maybe a question that Mark noted. Does that mean that you actually start selling alcohol at 6:30?
No, no, we start selling alcohol per the licenses provisions. And on Sunday, we can't start until much later in the day. So, you know, we don't, we don't go, you know, we don't have plans to put chains through the doors like you'd see in a gas station. You know, we have a much more high-end appearance, but it'll be very firmly regulated. And there'll be signs up so people know that they can't come in on Sunday morning before church and buy a six pack.
Okay. And just the way that the setup, you know, you had a, you had a floor plan, but I couldn't really exactly decipher it, like where the the beer and the wine is versus the food. Is it right by the counter?
Are you familiar? Have you ever been inside that Wendy's?
Um, it's been a while, and it's been closed now for a while, but
Yeah. Well, I mean, all Wendy's pretty much have the same footprint. So so the refrigerator is holding the beer and wine or against the front windows. So they're against the walls of what would have been the dining room. And opposite the fridges is where the red wine rack goes. So there's a five foot aisle along the window at what would be the back of the dining room that has craft beer and wine. And then on the other side of the wine is mixed retail, and then 10 seats, and then the line in front of the counter. You know, I know it's tough with, we don't have a lot of arrows and elaborate stuff, but you look at you come in the side door, and you walk right up to the service counter, and you'll have products on your left and the service counter on your right with all the food in the cash registers. So the 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 aisle way to transact with the restaurant is separate from the market and the little dining area. So we have four seats on a bar stool looking out the window, right? It's a little counter built into the window that's going to be next to a display of coffee beans. And then on the other side of that little counter is going to be a condiment table where you'd get your And then on the other side of that little counter is going to be a condiment table where you'd get your forks and your knives and your, let me get some extra napkins. That kind of thing. And then right against the other drawer will be a shelf where in-store pickup. So orders where people can come in, they've already ordered, they'll pick up their food right off of that shelf. So there's like two distinctive little sections that are kind of divided by a high back booth. So when you're sitting down behind you, behind the booth, that'll be the line in front of the counter. And then you'll be looking into the market in the store when you're sitting down.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
Chelsea? Mr. Mackey, thanks for coming. This is a very exciting, this is a very exciting announcement for the residents of Southborough that you are coming to town. There's been a lot of positive chatter. I've heard nothing but amazing things.
Yeah, we actually had your fire department up here in Stowe on Saturday. I don't know if they're not supposed to do that, but they were very excited and they came up to get lunch.
Oh, good. So I do have one question related to traffic. Obviously, that is, you know, you're on one side of Route 9. I'm just based on kind of the excitement that I'm I'm hearing about and your volume that you're doing in your stall location. Have you had a chance to meet with our police department to talk about any traffic control, especially when you open?
No, that's a really good idea, because I will admit that we're we've kind of had that on the back burner based on we have the fortunate opportunity of the exit lane for 495 starts about 200 feet east of us, which kind of allows that if there was slowdown traffic pulling into the parking lot, that they'd already be out of the traveling lanes of Route 9. We saw that as a very, very positive attribute. And also with the speed at which we're planning to move the drive-through lane, that's another thing that's of paramount importance. You know, if if we have to be on time, you know, because if the drive-through backs up, it'll still be a lot faster because there's no deciding, ordering or transacting in the lane, so the lane should move pretty quickly. But a conversation with the police department to see if they have any concerns would be great. But based on us pushing it to the maximum here on 117 and we've had pretty few, if any, incidents of traffic backing up, I think we should be in good shape, but I'll check with them anyway.
Okay, and I see Acting Chief Newell's in the audience, so he obviously heard this conversation and he would be your kind of first point of contact.
And what would be the name?
Ryan Newell. Ryan.
Alright, hi, Ryan. I'll be reaching out to you soon.
Excellent. Thank you, and I'm looking forward to all the positive feedback that you're going to get from Southborough residents.
Hey, thanks so much.
Is that it, Chelsea?
Yes.
So hi, I actually am an accountant that has a lot of restaurants as clients, so I've been involved in the process to get liquor licenses for a while. So if you get where, so do you go here first or do you go to the ABCC first?
No, the town has to approve it first and then it goes to the ABCC.
So you don't expect any issue there?
No.
They're they're running on schedule and they'll you think they'll get it done in time to open?
Oh, I hope so. I'm gonna, I got a favor I can call in with Kate Hogan, see if she can get me to the top of the stack, at least my plan.
Alright.
We are seven 75 days in already. It's it's a little long for us, so we're we're hoping to see if the town of the state can speed it up. They're they're pretty, they usually give you the phone number of the investigator and they hand them out, they hand, here's a cell phone number, you call them and then you you just poke them until they get until they get you all the questions, you know, the the hard part is waiting for the questions, you know. So if you don't get the questions from them quickly, then you have to like amend things, give them another copy of something and sometimes it it takes a bit. But I I think that they should be able to do it in 60 days with.
Sounds like you know the process, so that's good.
We currently hold an all-alcohol pour license in Sudbury as well as a retail license in Stowe as well. So this will be our third liquor license for our company.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get to. So I'm looking at the page where you list what you've got right now and I was confused. So 15 is a full liquor license?
No, section 15 is a package store license. Section 12 is the is the pour, is the consumption license. And we have a full-service restaurant in Sudbury that has a section 12 license and.
Okay, so just to be clear as far as what you operate today. In Stowe, you've got a market that's going to, that's similar to what you're opening in Southborough.
That's identical. I mean, except for the footprint, obviously.
And you're using separate LLCs for each one of these?
Yep, yep. The LLC in Stowe owns the one in Southborough. So we have, and the one in Stowe also owns our license in Sudbury, so they're kind of like a parent company, if you will. It's not a holding company, but the parent company, also an LLC, is on all three licenses.
Okay, so what's in Sudbury?
Sudbury is a, we have a Mexican restaurant called Sorbet Mesa. It's a full, full-service bar and restaurant with 200 seats and two bars. And that's the section 12 license.
Well, I'm sure I speak of always wish you success. One thing to keep in mind too, I think the state, Mark helped me here. I think the state will notify you of this, but Southborough adopted the local meals tax a year ago. It was effective 1122. So you'll have to collect 7% instead of six and a quarter as far as the sales tax goes on everything.
Yeah, and still we we is three, it's three quarters of a percent.
Same thing here. So that's so point 75. So same thing here. So instead of six and a quarter, which the state, we decided on that, so. So we definitely want you to be successful, so we can collect that 0.75%.
I love it. That's 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 the point, right?
Okay, Lisa, next. Are we just listening? Are we actually voting to approve this?
First, you're going to open it up to the public, Kathy, and if the public has any comments, and then you're going to take a motion to close the public comment and then the board can take a motion, entertain a motion.
Okay. Alright, I see no one with their hand raised in the public. Okay, so motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second, is that Sam and and AD?
Second.
Okay, and second. Okay, so we've had a motion in a second to close a public hearing. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Lisa?
Sorry, I.
Sam?
I.
AD?
I.
Chelsea?
I.
And cook is I, so 5-0 to approve the application for the new license.
Close the public hearing.
And close the public hearing.
And then we got to vote on the license, is that not correct?
Okay, so we closed the public hearing. So now do I have a motion to actually approve the new license for this restaurant?
Oh, move.
Second?
Second.
Any further?
Sorry, I think we need to be a little bit more specific on the motion, not just say this restaurant, right?
Yeah, so motion is to approve an application for a new license for Nance Market South LLC.
So move.
Second. Okay, so Chelsea seconded. Any further discussion as far as approval of the new license? Roll call vote, Lisa?
I.
Sam?
I.
AD?
I.
Chelsea?
I.
Cook is I, so 5-0 to approve the application for the new license for Nance Market South LLC. So congratulations, Mr. Mackey.
Thank you. Look forward, look forward to seeing you all for some vegetables and some chicken.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much. Good night. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is to basic is to interview Denise Eddie. Am I saying that right? For a open position on the Neri School Building Committee. So there's Denise. Hi Denise, can you hear us? There she is. Hello. So you're muted.
No, I'm not.
No, you're not. Okay, so welcome.
Cool. Thank you very much. Congratulations on your new board.
Thank you. Okay, so what we're going to do now Denise is just ask you a few questions as far as why you're interested in this, understand your background, etc., and then we will vote to approve or not approve you to be on this committee.
Thank you.
Okay, so Lisa, I'll start with you.
Great, thank you. Good evening Denise, welcome and thank you for coming tonight and thank you for applying for this position. I had the the pleasure of speaking to Denise in advance of her application. I I think if you would just take a second Denise and just kind of give us your background. I was so impressed when we did speak. I think it would be great for the board and the public. Well, I started out my career as a young teacher in in Milford and then left after my son was born. And then education sort of still was in my blood and I joined the Ashland School Committee. I was on the school board for 15 years. I chaired the board for five, oversaw two building projects under the SBA prerequisites. And the only way I could get off the board was to come back to town. So I came back to town as a resident of Southborough and was no longer on the school board in Southborough. And when I heard that night at town meeting that there was an opening, I thought, well, you know, I did a number of years of public service in Ashland and I thought to myself, it's maybe about time to come back. And this is a board that I would understand from my background as a school committee member and then overseeing two building projects as the school, as the chairman of the Ashland School Committee. I have an undergraduate degree in English. I have a master's in English and I have a law degree from Masquahoa. And I just thought, you know, maybe it was time for me to start to come back and give of my time. So I thought this was a good spot. That's about it. I live in town. We came to town in 1978. I left. Once I was married, I left and lived in Ashland and then came back and lived on Stockwell, but then left Stockwell to move in and take care of my mother. So we, I live on Deerfoot. She's passed away and I bought her house in 2010, I think. So I've been here since basically back after being married since 2004. Great, thank you. And again, I I look forward to supporting you. I was so inspired when I spoke to you that I I think you're just a perfect fit for this committee. So that's it for me, Kathy. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sam?
Thank you Denise, very impressive and appropriate presentation here. I don't have any questions except for one, high-level one. Do you have any advice for us in terms of how we're doing this?
It's a very difficult, it's a very difficult task. It's a lot of money. Taxpayers need to be educated along the way. And I think we need to be cognizant of the school department's needs and the town's needs all at the same time, and it's not easy.
Which which we're getting a complete understanding of as this goes along. It's already early in the process, but clearly a lot of moving parts and communication has already become an interesting issue in terms of making sure folks are effectively informed and when we get to the point of making some big decisions for financial impact. So again, thank you for volunteering. Sound like a perfect candidate.
One of the compliments I think I have to say is the town is really very lucky to have received, you know, direction and approval from the school building assistance committee, because I will tell you, some towns spend years on that list before they ever get funded. And so the state obviously saw a need, or we would never have been at the top of the list. And as I said, some towns are on that list forever and don't get money. So it's it's a compliment to the town.
Very exciting opportunity. So thank you again for volunteering.
You're welcome. Thank you.
AD?
Hi Denise, I really don't have any questions that haven't already been addressed. I think you're really a great fit for this position and I look forward to supporting your appointment.
Chelsea?
Thank you very much.
Denise, it's nice to meet you.
Good evening.
Thank you for putting in for this. I think your perspective is going to be invaluable on this. I I don't know anybody else that has this type of background that you do, so I'm really excited. I think you will be a great fit here. And I just, I just look forward to this committee, you know, continuing its work and bringing something great to the town of Southborough. So thanks for applying.
I'm excited. I think it's going to be a good thing. And I really do think that it it it, you know, it's very difficult to sometimes be on both sides of the fence because it's not easy. You know, you have the you have the taxpayers' money that you're spending as well as you have to meet the needs of the education of the children in the town of Southborough. Yeah, it's a it's a fine line.
Can I say that better? So Denise, what were the two MSBA sponsored projects you worked on in Ashland? What's what what were they?
We had the Mendez Middle School renovation and then we moved the high school into a new, prior to my, we we rented, we came, we had to decide what to do with the middle school, which then became, we built a new high school and the middle school moved up there. And then we also closed the Central Street School, which had elementary in it, and we built another renovation and an add-on to the Warren School.
Did either one or both of those processes look anything like what ours is going to look like? Which is basically, we're going to look at several different options here?
Yeah, we did. We had to look into exactly how we were going to configure the schools, whether or not they were going to remain the same. At the time, we had a middle school and a traditional high school, and the question was whether we, you know, changed the configuration at at Warren School, which was the elementary, because we were closing the Central Street School. And whether or not we changed that configuration where they actually did take the middle school and put that in the old high school and kept them together as a middle school. You know, it's many towns have had different, you know, configurations along the way. I remember in Milford when they decided to segregate the eighth grade from a regular middle school and that just didn't seem to work well, you know. And then they disbanded that and put all the children back together again. So, you know, school systems do try and sometimes don't make the appropriate decisions. But it it's tough because you have to work with the physical environment and you have to work with the configuration you have without upsetting the apple cart as you move things around. So I remember when I was a first, first-year teacher, we were on double sessions and that was really hard while we built a high school. That was one thing I would never want to see anybody have to go through. It was very difficult.
Well, I agree with everyone else. Your experience sounds perfect. It sounds like you dealt with exactly the same issues that we're going to deal with in Southborough as far as the choices here. So all good. Okay, so Lisa, I assume that we're going to vote tonight to appoint. Okay, alright, can I have a motion to appoint Denise? And Denise is your last name Eddie?
Yes.
As I say, Eddie?
Yes, correct.
To appoint Denise Eddie to the Neri Building Ad Hoc Committee.
So move.
Okay, so Chelsea seconded. Any further discussion before we vote?
I just wanted to add for Denise, I'm actually, I actually went to middle school as an eighth grader, so I know exactly what you're talking about.
It's not easy.
No, no, there were benefits, but yeah.
It's tough. I mean, expecting those kids to go to school at 7:00 AM and get out at noon. You know, there's a lot of inherent problems with kids being, you know, out at noon and those that are going to school at 12 o'clock and getting out at 5:00 PM. It's not easy.
Right.
And the state doesn't like to give those kind of approvals. They really don't. They they shy away from that, but it was, it was an interesting tenure in my life.
Yeah.
Alright, so we've had a motion. We've had a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Lisa?
I.
Sam?
I.
AD?
I.
Chelsea?
I.
Cook is I, so 5-0. So welcome Denise.
Thank you very much. I look forward to being part of town government again. It's been a long time and I just thought it was about time I get back in.
Thank you again Denise. I think you're going to be a invaluable member of that committee. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night.
Kathy, as you go to the next item, just know Mr. Kujani has withdrawn from the golf course interview process.
So we have three for three positions.
You, Madam Chair, you've got one, Christine Grimm did not confirm her appointment tonight. I don't see her in the room, but you do have Mr. Cola Boss and Mr. Shona are here.
Okay, so Lisa, we're going to do this one at a time, I assume? No, I guess we're not. Okay, here they are. So welcome, Tony, and welcome Nick.
Thank you. Thanks for having us this evening.
So why don't we start with Nick? So Nick, why don't you tell us about your relevant background and why you'd like to be on the golf course committee?
Sure. I moved to Southborough in June of 2018 and I'm actually a neighbor of Andrew's. So I was encouraged by Andrew and Ira to get involved in the golf course committee as golf has been a passion of mine for about 20 years now. Professionally, I work at Wellington Management. I'm in client operations and I've been there for about six years now. And starting a family in Southborough and just looking to get involved in the community. Currently, I don't have any government experience, but you got to start somewhere, so hopefully you guys will like me enough to select me to the committee tonight.
So can you tell us a little bit about your golf background specifically?
Sure.
What's your handicap?
I'm not going to go that far.
So I'm not a scratch golfer, but I do enjoy golfing and tightened up my game a little last year by taking about ten lessons through the summer. But back in two thousand and four, I started golfing so a little later in life, but I just left the army and I went back home and my mom's friends owned a similar little nine-hole golf course to, similar to the one in Southborough and I just learned by golfing on, in the Twilight leagues and have been enjoying it ever since.
Sam.
Again, thank you for applying. I assume you have played the Southborough course?
Just once, yes.
You, you do know that Golf Course Committee members don't get a discount at the course, right?
That's fine. I'm happy to contribute.
My key question, I mean, clearly a passion for golf, in my view, is, is a critical component here. Certainly sounds like you have that. From a time standpoint, this committee has historically met at some variable times, sometimes often like in the mornings, for example. Is that something that could work for your work schedule? Are you working remotely, for example? So you've got some flexibility there or?
I am working a hybrid schedule, but I have an office in Marlboro and one downtown Boston, so I'm really flexible with my schedule. So even if it was an early morning meeting or afternoon or, or, you know, post-five o'clock or I'm, I'm very available.
Good, good. That, that for me is the key. Love for the game and commitment to spend the time here. I think you will find that there are some interesting pending projects for the committee to consider relative to the course and the course has a little bit of money from the fees paid. And I think there's real opportunity to do some good things there in terms of improving the facility. So I would, I appreciate your volunteering and I certainly support your appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. I've read through a number of the minutes and have a good idea of what's proposed and available resources as well.
And we're off to a great start this year. Last year was the best year ever. We're on similar pace now so far this year.
Great.
It's like a great little business. Thank you.
A.D.
Hi Nick. I don't really have any questions for you because I know we've talked about the Golf Course Committee and I think Nick would be a I've always been impressed how, you know, he takes things pretty seriously. So I think you'd be a good fit for this. And also right down the street from us is also Mr. Crucianni, who is also a font of knowledge about the Southborough Golf Course, which I think, I don't know if you had a chance to speak to him about the course as well?
I have not, no.
Okay. He's definitely, we'll talk your ear off about it and you'll learn a lot.
Great. Looking forward to it.
Chelsea.
Hey Nick, nice to meet you. I love when people are joining their first committee. This is probably one of my favorite things to do on the board. So thanks for applying. Is there any specific project or initiative that you're interested in doing that you know either is on the docket or something new that you are thinking about?
Um, I, I like to get my hands dirty. As Andrew knows, we're both kind of landscape weekend warriors. So if there's any, any sort of the projects that involve, you know, some maintenance to the course, I would definitely be involved or like to get involved in that. I'm relatively new to some of the other formal things like contract negotiations, but those are some of the things that I also sometimes review in my work at Wellington. So pretty much anything that's thrown my way, I like to jump in and help out.
Okay, great. I know that we've not had enough for that committee to meet, so I think we're excited to fill some vacancies so that you can get going. And, you know, some of the things in the charge include increasing the programming. So I definitely would look to, you know, these new members to engage with junior golfing and some other programs to kind of increase the volume or the interest of residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Nick. Welcome. Thank you for coming. It's a pleasure to meet you. It's always great, as everyone has said, to have new volunteers step forward. It's, it's, it's an exciting time for the town. You know, it's an exciting time for you as well. So anything that we can do besides support you in this endeavor, certainly, you know, you have a good neighbor in Andrew that can certainly help guide your path as well. So thank you for stepping forward.
All right. You're welcome. Thank you.
So Nick, can you do, okay, so exactly what do you do at Wellington?
I'm a client operations analyst, so kind of the go-to guy that answers any questions between the clients and our portfolio managers and traders and in our back office.
So I think your background will be helpful here. You know, Southborough is pretty new to the business of running a golf course. We, we've owned it. We had to build the public safety building, so it was closed for a while. So we're, you know, we're into it now and I am optimistic too that we can turn this into a nice little moneymaker if it's run correctly. So that's what I would ask you to keep in mind. We're always looking for new ways to generate non-real estate tax revenue to try to keep some of the burden off real estate taxes. So I'm hoping that this continues to grow. It does look like more and more people are using it. So this is great. Congratulations and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Kathy.
All righty. So any other questions for Nick before we go to Tony? So welcome, Tony.
Good evening, everyone.
So you heard, you heard the drill. So we'll start with what's your background?
Yes. So, hi, everyone. I'm Tony Shonar. I've lived in town since nineteen ninety-two. My professional career has consisted of building communications technology as an engineer and businesses as a business executive. So I've had all sorts of roles in various high-tech startups in Massachusetts over the years. I started playing golf when I was eight years old. I took lessons from the town, local town rec department when I was eight and played and grew up playing on the local nine-hole golf course. And so when I saw that there was an opening for this committee in, in Southborough, I grew up in Connecticut, so I did not grow up in Southborough. When I, when I saw there was an opening for this committee in Southborough, I thought, well, I'd love to help with that. I've been volunteering more of my time in various town boards over the last year and I've enjoyed it a lot. And if I could help with this committee, that would be great. I'm, I'm an active golfer and I do think this golf course in town is just a great resource that should be used more. I think all the kids would, would, would benefit from taking golf lessons, knowing that they can take golf lessons and walk that course with their friends. There's just like not much better in life than walking a golf course with three of your friends.
So who's going to win the PGA?
Now, that's a really good question. I'm a Jordan Spieth fan.
Me too.
So, so I guess we'll see, but
He's going into it. He's on a roll, so he's
Mark Kala is really good too. So I wish Phil was there, but I don't know what Phil's been doing lately. So
He would be too big of a distraction, I think. So I think you probably did the right thing. Okay, so what other committees have you been involved in?
So I'm a current member of the capital planning committee. I also served on the ARPA committee. That's going to report to you guys a little bit later tonight.
Yeah. So you've been busy.
It's been interesting.
Sam.
Thank you and welcome, Tony. I actually don't have any questions. I've, I've watched Tony and the committees. I'm very impressed. I think he'd be a great fit here, a great addition to the committee. So I certainly support his appointment. Thank you.
A.D.
No, Tony, I'd certainly recognize your name from the ARPA committee and the capital planning committee. So you know, you've got a lot of, you know, solid background in town government and the capital side of it. So I, thank you very much for stepping forward and I think the golf committee is going to be in good hands.
Chelsea.
Hey Tony, nice to see you again. Thanks for volunteering for this. I think you'll be a great fit here. I think, you know, your background on the current work that you've done on the committees, the other committees that you're on will be helpful as well. So thanks again for stepping forward and filling an important role.
Lisa.
Good evening, Tony. It's, it's a pleasure to see you again. I have the pleasure to serve with Tony, so I have no questions for him other than to once again, thank you for stepping forward for another opportunity within the town. Thank you.
I don't have any questions either. I think you would be a great fit as far as this committee goes. Mr. Purple, do we know whether Christine is going to continue to want to be on this committee?
So we will reach out to her, but she did not, she did not confirm back for this evening. So to be determined, but we'll, we'll try reaching out again, see if she still remains interested.
Be nice. I mean, I assume the other two, there's two others on it at this point?
Yes.
And are they, is there a woman of those two? So are they both men?
Yes.
So it'd be nice to have one female because, you know, the female golf game is a little bit different than the men's as far as nuances anyway. So it'd be nice to have at least one female. So I hope she does continue to want to be on it. Okay. Can someone make a motion to basically appoint both Nick and Tony to the golf committee?
Also move, do we need a term? Arc, what's the term for these positions?
Right on the agenda, Mr. Stivers. It's June thirty, same, same as all of the other appointments. So they, they're yearly appointments.
Okay. Through June thirty, and this would be twenty-two now?
That's correct. So assumably, you know, we're going to be re-upping those appointments in the next couple of meetings.
So move to appoint Tony Shonar and Nick Cole, 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 Calivas, is that to the golf committee, ad hoc golf committee, a term through June thirty, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Okay, roll call vote. Sam?
Aye.
A.D.
Aye.
Chelsea?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Cook is aye, so five zero. So thank you both for, for doing this.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So is Mr. Ballantyne here?
He is.
I don't see him. There he is. And Carla?
I think they may be coming in as a package deal.
They are. Two for one.
Two for one. Yep. It's joint effort, so.
So where are you two?
Up in the hearing room. Town hall.
Okay, so Q three, financial report.
Yes. So typically, Kathy, this is probably one thing you don't need a lot of education on.
No, this is the one I feel comfortable with. The whole thing, this one, yes.
I'm sure. So if you've watched these, you kind of know, get to know the feel of, we put a lot of information in the packet. And of course, we don't go through it all here because we'd be here all night. But we do try to hit the high points. I usually take the revenues and Carla here usually does the expenses and then we, you know, kind of mix it up a little bit, but so as far as the revenues go, again, I don't read the, you know, every bullet point or anything. Just try to hit the highlights. And I think the couple of highlights I'd like to just point out tonight is that the revenues for, and this is the first bullet point, for the March thirty-first year of the year are up a hundred and eight thousand, which is, which is pretty good. That's, that's decent and it's getting a little later in the year. So that's probably going to stay positive. The other bullet point is that we're going to definitely reach our goal for the year. We're two hundred and ten thousand dollars away from that and with three more months to go, that's pretty much a done deal now. And it seems like a silly thing, but it's, if we weren't going to hit that, that would be more of a much bigger deal. So that's, that's good. That's a good thing. We're definitely going to be okay there. Jumping to the areas that have declined, I mean, we all know about investment income and I said this the past year with the rates so low. We're not going to hit that, that line item, but thankfully it's not a huge line item in our revenues anyways. And the fees for the tax liens, I'm hoping to recover most of that in the next few months because we've had some cases settle out in Q four. So you may see that be much better at the end of the year. Lastly, just to mention the water again, because it has been such a unfortunate year where we just, the revenue's down for that. It's, it's about six hundred thousand dollars for March thirty-first. So obviously we have a plan for that. And again, I did mention, I think we mentioned it last quarter, that we are going to collaborate with the DPW director and, and have some conversations about how they set their tiers and base rates. So that's going to be later on in the summer, but we'll keep you up to date on that. And I think that's it. Overall, it's a good, it's a solid quarter. All, most of the areas are at least either up or reasonably close. The ambulance fund's doing great. And, you know, hopefully the building fees, I think, were pretty good last month too, even though that fell into the next quarter. So it's a good, it's a good story. So that's kind of, that's kind of where the revenues fell out. So I don't know if you want to have questions on that or wait till the end and just listen to Carla's wrap up and then take questions.
Let's take questions on this first and then we'll, we'll talk about the expenses. So my question is, when you say revenue, you're talking about total revenue, not local revenue?
Local revenue means excise tax.
Yes, I know it's in local, but you, you say total, you could mean real estate taxes, state aid. You're talking local revenue when you say revenue?
No, I don't include, I don't include local aid or real estate taxes, no.
Okay, so you are talking local revenue, what we call local revenue. Okay, so year-over-year is up a hundred and eight thousand?
Correct.
Okay, so we should expect a pretty hefty free cash. And again, if things continue to trend like they are?
I hope so. I don't know how hefty it will be, but hefty it will be. I get nervous saying that, but
Okay, so you don't have to say hefty, but it looks like free cash is going to be in good shape based on what you know.
Let's hope so, yes.
Okay, that's all I'll ask you to say. A.D., anybody else have any questions as far as local revenue?
I do have a quick question. So about the water fund being down, is that in part attributable to, you know, there was, I think, an error in implementing a rate increase that we had already approved in a prior year? Do you think that's part of the reason?
It was approximately, and Carla can correct my memory if I'm wrong, I think it was about seventy thousand dollars. So about seventy thousand dollars of that is attributable to that, that
Okay.
area you're talking about.
Sam?
Most of it's the wet summer. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, water has been sort of crazy because the MWRA assessments have gone up simply because Boston drives those assessments and Boston was locked down during COVID. So a lot of that in the cost that Boston had borne previously got pushed out to the water communities, including us. So in crazy times, but quick comment, I guess, Brian, I'd view uptick in ambulance revenue as sort of good news, bad news kind of thing. That's not perfect, but any changes you see in the tax liens? Have we seen impact from COVID as people have been suffering financial hardship and an increase in tax liens as a result of that? Or is it too early to tell or?
Interestingly, no. In fact, they're actually in better shape than other years. And the only explanation I can think of is that the values of property and housing have been so strong that you do typically see that in, in cycles where the housing and land value is at a very strong level, you'll actually have better, you know, you'll have better collections because people don't want to, that's the last thing they would want to get rid of or jeopardize. So it's actually gone in the opposite direction. Yeah.
Good for us. All right. Thanks. That's it for me.
Chelsea.
I helped put it together, so I don't have any questions.
You know it. Lisa?
I had asked my questions in advance, Kathy. I'm also.
So Brian, and Carla, can we go back to the water, the six hundred thousand dollars that we transferred with the Warren article? You know, I kept, I don't remember ever doing that and I know it's permissible, but I've still not understand why we did that. And you know, because normally we do this at the end of the year, we do all the transfers, right? Select force approves transfers, advisory approves transfers, and then advisory does reserve. And we do it all at once. So I still don't understand why we did it. It tell me, to me, just almost, you know, stood the possibility of opening up a can of worms to try to explain something that would have been really hard to explain as far as the concept of moving money out of retained earnings, which is, you know, in accounting world, you got to be an accountant, I think, to understand that piece of it. Which is, you know, in accounting world, you got to be an accountant, I think, to understand that piece of it, so why did we decide to do that at town meeting when we had not done that in the past?
So we were looking at this year, you know, with reduced revenues coming in, and we were trying to the enterprise fund needs to support itself in all its operations and salaries and capital and everything. So it's a DOR regulation that if we vote anything from retained earnings usage is to have town meeting voted. That's not something that the Board of Selectmen or Advisory can do. It's actually on one of the DOR sheets that we have to fill out annually for the DOR.
So just for, just for enterprise fund?
Yes, yes, so we, you know how there's free cash for general funds? There's retained earnings for water that gets certified every year, so it's a similar process.
Now, I get that it's kind of the same thing, it's just called retained earnings. Okay, so how much is left in retained earnings after this transfer was made? And after we use the piece that is expected to be used for the fiscal year 23 budget?
Okay, I had that ready for town meeting, Kathy, I don't have it with me tonight, I'll be happy to provide that to you tomorrow. I'll get that to you.
So what happens if we end up with no retained earnings? What, what do you do then?
Well.
No, I'm serious, I mean, you know, I don't remember what it was, but you know, we haven't had it for a very long time, it's not like we've got.
Yeah, once we started doing the full enterprise fund, which was a couple of years ago, and we needed to dip into the retained earnings to kind of supplement the budget due to the loss of revenue that we've had to, for this year in anticipation of next year, if we don't use it, that's, that's fine. If anything that we don't need, we'll just roll back into retained earnings. Our goal is not to, we want to reduce the retained earnings down, but we're using some this year and some next year, that's why we're going to work with Karen and kind of restructure the water rates. It, she has a plan and to work with the water consultant and us on that to kind of even out the bumps, because on a year that's a really wet year, and people don't use a lot of water, our higher tiers are bringing in less money, so we're, we're going to try to just do a complete overhaul. Probably should have been done at the time that the enterprise fund was set up as a full enterprise from special revenue, but at that time, we were, we were good to go, and we were getting strong revenues, and COVID kind of masked that, we had so much revenue in that COVID year. And now we're paying for that water now, so yeah, that's, that's why we're going to relook at that, that's a, that's a summer project for us.
Okay, so last question for me, Chelsea, I don't know what you remember, but I am pretty confident that when, when we met, when advisory met with Karen on the Water Enterprise Fund, that we had no idea at that point that we were going to have to make this transfer, and I don't see how we could not have known it then, if the root cause of it is last summer's wet season, where people weren't using as much water to water their yards, so I, I I'm going to go back and look, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't remember being worried about this, and didn't really realize what was going on until the article appeared and the number was in it, so is this something that we realized late, or is it something that advisory just didn't understand?
So I don't think that this was realized late, but I do have the water memo up, and the target is 20% of the budget is supposed to be retained earnings, and for FY22 projected, we're at 33.3% of the budget, and Carla, does this number sound right, that it's 917,000?
For both?
For FY22?
That were.
And then 901,000 for FY23?
I, I don't, though, no, no.
No.
I'm sorry, I don't, I can't put my finger on that right now.
Okay. I can.
Let's not, so I.
Those are the retained earnings numbers, Chelsea, or?
That doesn't compute to me, so let's, we'll talk about this separately.
Yeah. We'll follow up.
Okay, all right.
I'll, you know, you guys tomorrow, or the board tomorrow.
All right, so I assume no more questions on revenue, and Carla's got the expenses.
Yeah. Is everyone good? Everyone's good with revenues? Yeah.
You're on.
I'm on, okay, so there was a lot of material in, in the packet, as Brian said. We included info on the general fund, water fund, revolving fund, CPA articles, and an update on FEMA as well. I would like to focus on the, there was a reserve fund transfer sheet in the packet, and as far as what we're, we're looking at everything, but what we're really zeroing in on are those departments that may have potential transfers. So I think this list kind of summarizes those departments. Right now, on the list is advisory, we're looking at a $475 transfer for the minute takers. If needed, for info technology, a $3,000 transfer for the Board of Health printer. The town clerk has estimated unbudgeted, unbudgeted expenses for early voting and vote by mail and town meeting, election, and whatnot for 8,000. And now that those events have happened, I imagine we're going to firm that number up. Facilities is going to try to cover everything within their budget, but, you know, energy may be a factor based on how the spring and the rest of May and June pop out. The fire originally had told us that they may need a transfer for the lieutenant promotion assessment, but we did actually get an email today from the chief that said he's looking like he can cover everything within his budget. DPW with gas, I mean, everyone's feeling the gas, so, and the pinch of that, so we're going to keep an eye on that, but we have encumbered in DPW for trash and gas and all of our other things that we're able to forecast out at, at this point. Again, Karen's goal is to cover it within her budget, but we felt it was important to mention it here. For Board of Health, there is some ineligible hours, just based on what the hours were spent on for Taylor and Heather, and that totals 216043. For liability insurance, there was an unplanned premium increase of 6150. And some potential maybe intergovernment transfers or reserve fund transfers for the treasurer is going to be over in training, and for the court judgment, North Row settlement, it looks, there's been a deficit of 78136. So those are our main departments that we're keeping a close eye on. Everybody else is, you know, getting their reports every two weeks and keeping an eye on things, and if anything else pops up, I will definitely make the board aware.
Anyone want to comment on potential reserve fund transfers?
I just, this is just a background question again, I really should know the answer to this off the top of my head, but could you explain again the difference between where, you know, a line item in a department's budget, there's an overage, but then it's, it's accounted for within the department's overall budget versus where there's an overage and that it qualifies for a potential reserve fund transfer?
Sure, well, if they're, the, the budget itself is overdrawn, like if there's a deficit, you know, for the budget overall at the end of.
The department budget?
Yes, 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 a department budget, like say for the town clerk, if they
Okay.
spend their budget, and, you know, there's unbudgeted expenses for different things, what we would do is we would take a reserve fund transfer from, that voted from advisory and cover that budget, we would actually move the budget money. There could be an instance where the town clerk has a line item that is over budget, but if it can be covered with other non-salary items, or even salary items, the selectman could, could opt to let the salary cover the non-salary in, in a case like that, there would be no reserve fund necessary, it would just be covered within the department itself, speaking of the town clerk, or, you know, facilities or whatnot.
Okay, so for example, like the question mark for DPW gas, there's still the potential that even though gas is going, that line item is going to exceed it, snow and ice is lower, so that overall, you don't need to do a reserve fund transfer.
Right.
Okay.
And, and actually, the, the goal of all the big departments, I've spoken with all police, fire, facilities in DPW, and they will all try to cover with, within their budget, and they're all keeping a close eye on things. I feel confident there, they're well-educated in this.
Okay, and thank you again, I really should know that again.
No, no problem.
It's confusing. So Chelsea, I'm assuming you don't have any questions, because you've already reviewed this. Lisa?
Not specifically to this, I have questions on the revolving fund when we get there.
Sam?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so I feel comfortable with this one, too, Brian, as far as reserve fund, so a couple of questions. The 21, is it 21,000 for Board of Health, Carla?
Nope, 20, 2,060, 2,160 and 43 dollars, 43 cents, sorry.
Okay, so.
2,160.
And that's your projection as far as to year end, or that's just where it is today?
This.
Or through 331?
Are actually through 331, these are ineligible hours, just based on what their time was spent on, because Heather and Taylor, they have contracts, then we have budget and amounts, and there's a difference. That difference should all be COVID work, there is some hours that were not COVID work, that were considered other work, and so that, that is the amount so far.
Because this is where advisory backstopped this budget, and so you're saying, we thought it was going to be tens of thousands of dollars, so you're, you've been able, it looks like, to use FEMA reimbursements to cover the excess amount that's in the budget for fiscal year 22 from 1-1 through 630.
So we have applied, we have put reimbursements in. The potential reimbursable amounts for 22 for the director is 40,72179. For the nurse, it's 54,03182, and for per diem nurses, it's 3,933. For a department total of just over $98,000, so these have been submitted to FEMA. We have not heard back from them yet, FEMA does take a while to, to paw through the, all of the backup, it's, it's quite a process to, to put these together and have all the supporting documents. So right now, we have four applications that are in the review stage with FEMA, so that, that 20, 2,160 is just hours that, based on how it's set up between the COVID, working the COVID hours and the contracts and the budget, those are ones that we can't even submit to FEMA.
Well, that's an outstanding result, so we need to get this info to advisory, because remember, advisory is not going to approve a reserve fund transfer, at least that's their policy, unless they're told about it basically concurrently with when it occurs, so if you could just update advisory on everything you said tonight, that would be great, but it looks like advisory, the reserve fund's going to be fine, it looks like.
Just to be clear, though, we haven't received the reimbursement from FEMA, so
Right.
we don't know the timing of that, right, Carla, on, on when we're going to find out or, or not, so, so I, I I don't know that we can say.
Okay, so if we don't receive it by, actually cash in the bank by June 30th, then we will need to do reserve fund transfers for Board of Health, is what we're seeing here?
Yeah, or if it's not approved.
And note, what, what I'll do is, right now, those expenses, because there was so much back and forth last year, and it, it was so messy in FY21. I left all the charges in FY22 in the budget, I moved them out and put them in FEMA. The DOR has said, again, if you have a FEMA deficit, you're good, we'll let it roll, so that, that buys us another year, because there's a lot of towns that have still outstanding loose ends, like, like I think I had done a memo earlier and said, you know, what, the masks are gone, but there's still a lot of work to do, there's a lot of loose ends, a lot of back and forth between FEMA to, to wrap these things up, so, but the good news is, is once they give a determination, and if we, you know, apply or, you know, argue, which Neil and I have back and forth with them, it'll be what it'll be, and we'll know what, what, what they won't cover, so.
Okay, so it still sounds like the reserve fund is not going to be used for fiscal year 22, other than the $2,000, unless something changes.
Unless something changes.
Okay, all right.
Now and then, yep.
Okay, any other questions on reserve fund before we talk?
Sorry, just one other comment, and that was through 331, right, Carla, and we will not have another FEMA claim for Board of Health for, for Q4, so we can probably, is that accurate?
Right, what we'll do is, right now, what, what the plan is, is if, if we just do, after the vaccines, we're still working with trying to figure out the revenues and whatnot for that. But our application number eight would be one where we would do the remaining salaries, Q4 and any FEMA charges, which is basically just, at this point, cleaning for the public safety building and some school expenses as, as well, but really not a lot to that, but we want to do just one cleanup application for the end, supposedly FEMA is going to end on July 31st, but they've been telling us for a while it's going to end. So, you know, we're kind of like targeting that as like the next cutoff of time, so. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more reserve fund transfers before we talk about other expenses? Okay, all right, go ahead, Carla.
So in the packet as well, we had the revolving funds, basically, this was the chart that kind of just gave a snapshot of what the revolving fund was voted, how it was voted, what can be used for the revenues and expenses, and how it stacks up to the limit that was voted at town meeting. Right now, I don't, I'm not concerned with any of the spending, I, RAC will even come in below their the limit that was voted at town meeting. We're still waiting on the flu clinic, the, the flu clinic immunization revolving fund, we're, we're waiting on revenues for that. UMass is awfully slow claiming COVID, and we're working with them, trying to get answers from them, but I am a little nervous about that balance, but I believe it'll be in the red, I mean, the black for June 30th.
So any questions on any of the revolving funds? Where?
Kathy? So Carla and Brian, I had, I had kind of asked for this information in advance, I just, I was just curious on the 9/11 revolving fund, I know there's one more year left on the bond. What is the amount paid year-over-year to date so far from the revolving fund, and I, I'm asking because there's $52,000 sitting in there currently, and I see only 25 that looks like was transferred this fiscal year, so can you just tell me what's still outstanding and what the plan is for reimbursement?
40 will be transferred for FY23, Lisa. And then after that, we do have a schedule that I've given to him, the Recreation Director. It, it actually graduates from 45,000 to 60,000 for the next it ends in FY34, so that's what, 10 years? All 10 years?
Okay, so there's, there's an active schedule in place to pay this back, okay. And that's it, thank you, thank you, Kathy.
Anybody else for revolving fund questions, any of the revolving funds? All right, next, Carla?
The next section that we reported on, this, this was a new addition to the packet, is the CPA projects. And basically, I just broke them out by their type, open space, historical housing, recreation, and what is voted annually. There are some old projects on there, and CPC, I believe, has a meeting on Thursday night, and this is on their agenda, so I assume that hopefully they'll let us, you know, put some of that money back from whence it came, and if they're not going to use it for the projects, so that's something that we've been in. and if they're not going to use it for the projects. So that's something that we've been in contact with them on. And then there'll be a capital piece as well that is embedded from the capital committee yet, but we're getting that together. The last update, I kind of talked about FEMA with regard to Board of Health. They kind of overlap. Does anyone have any specific questions? I feel like I addressed it a little bit, but is there anything overarching questions?
Any questions on FEMA? Select board?
And so, just big picture, though, the window on FEMA reimbursements is closing soon. Is that right?
Well, that's what they they say. The program is ending July 31st, and then we would have, I think it's 60 days to put in a final claim. And I feel like we're in good shape because the only claims we have outstanding are vaccination, which we're working on now, because we had all the costs together, and now they told us we have to break out regional and local costs. So we're working on making sure we're applying for, you know, the right place to the right claim. And then as far as what's left to apply for for FEMA, it's it's basically, like I said, the public safety cleaning and the Q4 Board of Health. And so I think we're in good shape. I don't believe that there will be anything that we, any deadline we can't make, you know, for FEMA to to wrap it up. So they they let you know when the program ends, but like I said, they've been saying the program was going to end, and they keep extending. So but we're just keeping our ear to the ground on that, and again, working back and forth with FEMA when they have questions on the claims, getting back to them timely to keep trying to keep things moving along. But they say when a FEMA claim is filed, it's usually about eight to 10 months to get through it. It seems, I I'm not really sure, all the stages that it goes through, a lot of stages. A lot of things, so.
So Carla, going back to CPA for a moment, do you know, do you have with you what the year-over-year comparison is of the state match?
I don't have that. I can send that to you.
They have a supplemental match this year, too.
They did. That's what I mean. It's going up. It's going, there's more and more money in that, and they increased the fee that funds it. And then they approved extra money to go into it, so it should be more year-over-year.
It should be, yes, you're right.
Yep, I'll get I'll get those numbers to you. Kathy, yep, Kathy, into the board. Yep, happy to do that.
So is that it, Carla, as far as your expense side?
Yep, there is. The the last item was a memo from the facilities director with regard to the capital maintenance article, just not like a line-by-line detail, but basically what he's used that capital maintenance article so far this year. So if you just want to take a gander at that, you'll you'll be in the know on capital maintenance as well so so far.
So going back to one thing that I meant to ask when we were on the topic, the reserve fund transfers. Did you say that the IT department is going to request a reserve fund transfer for the excess cost of the copier?
That was, that's why the reserve fund was increased last year at town meeting. I I just put if needed, just, I don't believe that's, I I don't believe it's needed at all. No.
But isn't the IT budget very much in the black because of not hiring the second person?
Yes, yeah, yep. But it was on the list just because that's what.
Yep, that's exactly why, and they got registered back this year, so. Okay, any other questions on anything financial for Carla and Brian? Sam?
One quick retro question. Sorry, I didn't think of this earlier, but I've been reading stuff from Mass Municipal Association, where the current budget that's rolling through the legislature has an increase in state funding for a variety of things, and I've seen that they've published the updated cherry sheets or preliminary ones, et cetera. And part of it is an increase in pilot payments, which we get because we've got reservoir land in town that isn't taxed, I think. Are we expecting any significant increase in state funding from those sources?
They did post the the last, it was just a week ago or so, maybe not even a week ago.
Yes.
And it did actually increase what we had at town meeting. I think the net, it's funny, because every time they give us these these updates, they they increase the charges, too. So it's almost, it it's kind of a net sort of gain, but it was about $40,000 net that we gained about a week ago. So post-town meeting.
Yeah, excellent. Okay, thanks.
That's good.
Really a bit helps.
A little bit helps.
Any other questions on?
Road culvert to me.
Any other questions on financial matters before we say goodnight? All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, we're ready for the ARPA committee presentation. Looks like we got a lot of ARPA committee members here. So Vanessa, are you going to bring over everyone or just the chair?
No, I'm moving the others over right now.
Okay.
So I have a meeting posted for tonight for our committee, since we have a quorum, so I think I'll call us to order first, right before we start.
Yes, please.
Is that?
Anyone?
I'm looking. Got.
Andrew.
Mimi.
You call it order when you see everybody.
Yeah, I'm just looking here. I see Tim. Tony, Joe, Joe's here. Yeah, John and Ann. Yep, okay. So I will go ahead then and call to order the May 17th meeting of the ARPA committee. We'll do a quick real call. Ms. Luttrell?
Here.
Mr. Martell? Mr. Shoner?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Ms. Rubenstein?
Here.
Okay, and Andrea Hamilton, I am here. So we are called to order, and Mimi, I believe you had volunteered for minutes for this one, right? Thank you. All right, great. So we are in order. Do you want us to just start with the presentation we have?
I do. So welcome, ARPA committee, and yes, please start.
Okay, so I am going to share it from my screen. No, I'm not able to share it.
Hang on.
Enabled.
Yeah. Quickly just now, and.
Perfect.
Andrea.
Thank you. All right, here we go. So let me know when you are able to see.
We can see.
Perfect. Just that full screen. Let's kind of think about it. All right. All right, so this is the report out for the ARPA committee. So this is going to go over the work we've done over the last few months. We're going to start with the review of who we are, the charge we are given, a brief review of ARPA and what we can and cannot spend this money on. And then we'll move into our overall committee timeline and our approach. We'll talk about the results from a survey that we conducted, and then go through the proposal recommendations. I'll say I have a full presentation here, but please feel free to jump in if you have any questions in real time. I'm happy to answer as we go along. So the perfect, ARPA committee composition, myself, Andrea Hamilton, I am the chair. Mimi Luttrell is our co-chair, so she is joining us from the planning board. Tim Martell joins us from advisory, Tony Shoner from Capital Planning, Joe Palmer from Capital Planning, John Wood from EDC, and then Ann Rubenstein, similar to me, is someone who is not serving on any other board. And so that is the makeup that was created in the charge. And I'll just make a note that we've been meeting weekly, every Tuesday or Thursday, since late January, and anyone who wants to take a look at any of our agendas or minutes, I put the link there. So in terms of the charge we were given at the outset, overall, Southborough has just over $3 million in ARPA funds that they are trying to allocate. So we were asked to solicit input from town departments, boards, committees, and commissions. We were asked to solicit input from the Southborough community, there means including, but not limited to surveys and public forums. We'll see, we did one of each. We were asked to develop an evaluation tool and rank proposals for funding, taking into account the benefit of the requested improvement to town operations and/or the community as a whole. The town shall develop a report to present to the select board that will include a list of all proposals submitted for consideration, in addition to those recommended for funding. So that's what we're going through right now. And then our recommendation presented to the select board, no later than May 16th. We have been given graciously till May 17th, since this was the first meeting after our after our vote. So, right, and any recommendations for annual town meeting need to be in before March 1st? So there's a few things you'll see towards the end of this that are already allocated out, because they need to be in before the warrant. So these are the broad categories that ARPA funds can be used for. So the first is to respond to the public health emergency, or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses and nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. Right, so broadly, this is COVID impact. To respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers. So this ends up being non-exempt workers who were in person, effectively. Those are the main criteria. For the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year prior to the emergency. So this is actually the one that that most applies to us. So effectively, what ended up happening is that the government created a standard allowance of up to $10 million to spend on government services. So there's an assumed revenue loss due to the pandemic. And because our total allocation is below $10 million, it really gives us full flexibility to use it for anything that could feasibly be considered a government service. And I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide, but but that's really, as you're thinking about where this money can be put to, it really all falls under this bucket. To make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure, and then may only be used for costs incurred within a specific time period, beginning March 3, 2021, with all funds obligated by December 31, 2024. So a little under three years to have all the funds obligated and spent by December 31, 2026. Right? So again, getting into that lost revenue standard allowance, right? So this is the standard allowance of $10 million to spend on government services through the period of performance. Government services generally include any service traditionally provided by a government unless treasury has stated otherwise. So again, this is a very broad category. And it's government services is the most flexible, flexible, eligible use category under the SLFRF program. Funds are subject to streamlined reporting and compliance requirements. Recipients should be mindful that certain restrictions, which are detailed further, we can't use. So let's go into restrictions. So really, it's just a few buckets that we cannot use this money towards. The first is to offset a reduction in net tax revenue, and I'm just going to note that really that applies to states and territories, right? So it's for for any sort of changes in the law that you that you can't simultaneously reduce how your tax bracketing and then increase by using ARPA funds, that doesn't apply to us. We're really only going to be talking about property taxes here. Deposits into pension funds. So again, this money is, it's looking for concrete uses now. It's not looking for future planning. So you can't use it for pension funds. And there's also this bucket at the end here, no debt servicing, nothing for settlements and judgments. You can't put it into rainy day funds. It's looking for projects. So again, it's when we're thinking about this money, thinking about these buckets about what we can't use the money for, rather than trying to fit it into buckets about what we can use the money for. Okay. So moving on and talking about what we did over the last few months. So I just want to point out that from when this committee held its first meeting to when we voted on our final recommendations, that was a three-month period. So this has been a really fast-moving committee, and I want to thank everyone who has been on it and participated, because it's it's really been a lot of work within a very compressed window of time. So our first meeting was held towards the end of January. Before February, we had our first request out to all town departments for proposals. We had about a month where proposal submission could happen. We opened a survey to the town in early March. That was open for about three weeks. In that window, we also held a public forum. Attendance was quite poor, so that ultimately didn't factor heavily into our decisions, but we did have one. And then we took a couple of minutes to deliberate and finalize our recommendations in the end of April. So I think it was three weeks ago that we did our voting, put together our presentation, and now we are here reporting out. So now I'm going to go through our process in a little more detail. So the first is our solicitation of proposals. So we sent a request out to all town chairs, boards, committees, and department heads, asking them to submit for projects that they think could be funded through this ARPA money. We also provided a standard template. Folks didn't have to use it, but basically we created some broad categories that we wanted to understand. Things like whether or not there was alternative funding sources, the timelines of the projects, just to give folks an idea of kind of the information that we were looking for. We also created four broad categories that we were kind of looking for proposals to slot into. These were what we considered sort of priority requests. So the first was ongoing pandemic-related need for Southborough residents and businesses, either health-based or economic. We felt that this was really sort of the original intent of this money, and we wanted to make sure that we captured those sorts of proposals. And we were also looking for proposals that would reduce the overall property tax burden for town residents, address a significant community want, and most of that feedback comes from our survey, and then risk-reduced future town expenditure. So I'll just take a second. That last category was really in response to, there were a lot of different feasibility studies out there, some that were really important. Ultimately, those top three categories were able to absorb all the money, and so we ended up not funding anything in feasibility. So that was there as one of the buckets that we had, but ultimately, those three above were able to absorb all the money. Additional, an additional email was also sent expressing the committee's hesitancy towards funding long-term staffing positions with ARPA money. We did have some requests come in, looking around staffing, and the committee in general felt that, you know, anything that relates to long-term headcount should go to town meeting. We didn't say that you couldn't submit for that, but that was something that we wanted folks to be aware of, that that was something we were, had a lot of hesitancy around. We had follow-up conducted by individual committee members, as well as some invitations to speak to different department heads at the committee meetings as needed, and just to kind of put into framework the number, the volume of proposals we had. So we ultimately had over 30 proposals from over 14 different groups. And depending on kind of how you slice and dice the money, it was between $4 to $5 million worth of projects. So the things that aren't funded here, there's absolutely no judgment on merit. There were a lot of worthwhile things that came in. We just truly could not do everything with the money that we had. And I really want to thank everyone who submitted. We had a lot of very thoughtful proposals. And again, I think everything had merit. It really came down to, we could not do everything, so we had to make some hard decisions. Okay. Um, any questions on anything up to now? All right. So we put out a survey to solicit feedback from the town. So this was done as an addendum to the town satisfaction survey. So they were done as two separate links. So when you went in to see the surveys, there was one for ARPA and then one for the full town satisfaction. We did a lot of advertising efforts. We had signs up at the the transfer station. There were flyers put around town, and we posted at a bunch of different forums. And there was a direct mailer that went out to all town residents. Ultimately, folks were given 17 ranked choice options, and we ended up getting back about 674 participants. So that's based on. So that's based on historic data around other surveys that have gone out, that's pretty good, that's higher than we typically get. So I think we had really good responses here. We did also have an open forum on March 25th. Attendance was very, very limited, though, so that was not really something that ended up weighing heavily into our decision-making, just given the lack of attendance. And I really want to say a huge thank you to Matt Probst, Mary Ann Bovace, and Brian Bovace for their help in executing and analyzing the survey. Mary Ann, Matt helped us put together really everything to get the survey out the door, it was a huge help. And Mary Ann and Brian did all the data analysis for us, and we asked, you know, we closed the survey, I think, on a Friday, and we're trying to get data to start looking at for like the next Tuesday. And they turned around things very, very fast, they were super helpful, so huge, huge thank yous to them. So getting into the results, so just to sort of provide some color into how this analysis happened. So we had 17 different options for folks to select. There's a couple of different ways you can analyze it, you can just look at a majority rules, top, you know, five. You can do a ranked choice where you start like removing, you start down selecting items by how many votes they got. There's a bunch of different ways to do it. We also had about a week into the survey, some adjustments made to language, and we also realized we hadn't included trails on the initial survey, so we also looked pre and post-update to see if there was any meaningful difference by making those adjustments, because we didn't want someone to unfairly get fewer votes just because they hadn't been on as long, because the language wasn't clear enough. And so in the end, no matter how we sliced and diced this, there were six items that were always in our top five. So we are considering those are high-want items. And so it's the six I have up here, so it's property tax abatement, the senior center renovation and sidewalk work, purchasing of a 1.7-acre lot in downtown Southborough, that's the National Grid property, youth and family services, how do we have that up here? Yeah, mental health support services and outreach, and then premium pay for essential workers in town. So again, this is six different items that, no matter how we looked at the data, were always our top five. Any questions about that? That's a little weird, but I mean, so we basically have six in our top five. Good? All right. Okay, so now I'm going to get into the recommendations. So the way I have this structured is the first ones we'll go through have really fixed costs associated with them. The last couple, and I'll tell you when we get there, it's a little bit more, I don't want to say arbitrary, but it's money where we had to kind of pick the amount, more so than this is the amount that goes with this project. So what we're going to look at first is really just sort of hard numbers that came with projects. So the first is, so again, these are what we're recommending now, so the senior center renovation. So the request is for $400,000, that's inclusive of the $20,000 that's already been committed for the architectural drawings. So it's an additional 380 on top of that. It was in that top five, so there are six in the top five, so it was one of the six in the top five in our survey. You'll see we line things up with whether or not they're also a master plan goal, in this case it's no. So what this is, is construction of a new room on the front of the senior center. And our justification, again, this was just, it was a significant town want, so all those six items you'll see show up on this list. It was hard for us to justify not doing something when it had, you know, significant backing from the community. And overall, we felt that this supports our seniors, which is a group that's disproportionately been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. We also had several groups write letters in support of the senior center. This just had a lot of community backing behind it, and so this is one that we recommend moving forwards with. Any questions here? Okay.
Nope.
Great. So youth and family services, mental health support services. So this was a total cost of $76,000, and it is broken up into three separate requests. So one was $46,000 for a part-time mental health clinician, this is to serve temporarily as a bridge as folks are struggling to find mental health services. They were also looking for $5,000, I'm sorry, this is marketing, that's just a marketing, marketing and outreach to sort of to make sure folks are aware of the services that are available. And then $25,000 to extend a one-year contract for a group called Interface Referral Services, which is mental health referral for folks in town for free. So this is something that they brought on to address mental health need because of the pandemic, and they'd like to extend it for another year. Youth and family services, mental health support was one of the top five items in our survey. It is not a master plan goal because it's a more acute need. And if you look at the description, the referral services connects residents with mental health specialists, and then we have a temporary mental health clinician to provide short-term and bridge services for residents requiring mental health support, the marketing outreach to advertise services available to residents. So again, this was a significant town want, it was one of the top six in the top five. And it overall supports an increased need for mental health support driven by the COVID-19 pandemic. So we thought that this was important. Any questions on this?
No.
Nope, okay. Temporary staffing for the Board of Health. So we allocated $110,500. I will say so that for that first bucket, that's $104,000 for bridge staffing. At the time, we were agnostic to whether or not that went to a two-year director position or a director and a nurse position that came up in town meeting, and ultimately now it is the two-year director position. So I believe that 104 number now drops to 101, it's a little less with the two-year director. But regardless, the allocation should be there whichever direction it goes. And then there's also an additional $6,500 for vaccination clinic staffing. This was not a top five in the survey, this is not a master plan goal. However, this is towards that acute, ongoing pandemic need. And so that was one of our most important buckets, we felt fulfilling. So this is one that we are going to recommend going forwards with. Any question on this one?
I see none.
Okay. Completion of the Peninsula Trail and Other Trail Enhancements. So the Peninsula Trail runs along sort of back behind Route 30. And the total cost for that was $194,547, $194,547? And then we're also recommending another $12,500 for additional trail enhancements. So there was requesting around, there's some places that need benches or updated signage. There's sort of a laundry list of small needs that the Trails Committee had. Trails were not a top five in the survey, but they are a master plan goal. So we are looking for the construction of accessible Peninsula Trail boardwalk and footbridge, and then the additional enhancements, again, yeah, signage, benches, and things. Our justification is that even though this was not one of our top five wants in the survey, Trails and Connectivity have historically been community priorities, so this is something, if we go kind of backwards and look at previous surveys, have come up often. And the Peninsula Trail is a master plan goal. It would also provide the only ADA-certified trail in Southborough, and Trails saw a significant uptick of usage during COVID-19. And then the enhancements that are for the other Trails will make them more broadly accessible to town residents. So it addresses accessibility, addresses increased usage from COVID-19, addresses a master plan goal. And it also, again, even though it wasn't one of the top priorities in our survey, historically, Trails and Connectivity have been, and that's what this helps address. Just one note at the bottom, so there is a grant pending for the trail work. However, we have been told that it's quite low probability that it will come through. If it's awarded, then the money will need to be reallocated, and the grant decision is expected by this year's end, so it falls within the timeline for this money to be spent. Any questions on this one?
Andrea, when you say year-end, fiscal year or calendar year?
Calendar is my understanding.
Okay.
Good. Okay, the town purchase of the National Grid property in downtown. So this is the 1.7-acre parcel in downtown Southborough. So the overall cost is $252,000. This was a top five from our survey, it is also a master plan goal, so it is both. So it represents a future town asset, right? There's a lot of different potential uses for this land, and it's something that makes sense to purchase. Any questions on this one?
What are the potential uses for this land?
Yeah, so it could be used for parking, it can be used for wastewater, it can be used for additional development. It could be just held as an asset and resold. There's a number of different things that could be done, but it basically gives us a significant footprint in downtown that the town can use as it wants.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, Kathy?
Of course.
So on this one specifically, I have some general questions when you get done, but on this, was there any thought given to the potential testing that, to any testing that may need to be done on this parcel within the discussions?
No, it was just for the land purchase.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Lisa?
Go ahead, Sam.
This has been on my list for quite a while, and I've talked with a variety of people about the process. And you raise a good question, there are varying opinions on whether there is anything under the ground that we need to be concerned about. I do know that other towns have acquired this type of property and basically paved over it to limit that exposure effectively, which you could use for parking. You could, as Andrea says, you could put a wastewater facility on there as well. And you could also rubberize the asphalt and make a playground, for example, that, for example, Sudbury has a great playground. It's basically a rubberized surface on it, so a lot of interesting possibilities. But clearly, determining what the issue is relative to 21e exposure would be an important part of the process. But I don't think it would, from what I understood at least, would not allow us to move forward with this, depending on, you know, what they find. So I remain optimistic, but clearly an issue we need to deal with.
Anyone else before she moves on? Okay, Andrea, keep going.
All right. Technology, infrastructure updates, so the total cost here is $330,000. So it includes $250,000 for Wi-Fi upgrades throughout town, and then $80,000 for a new town website. This was not a top five in our survey, but it is a master plan goal. So in upgrading the town's website to support more collaborative features and upgrading the town's Wi-Fi capabilities of specific town facilities. So while this was not a significant town want in the survey, really what this is, is a town need. There's some necessary cybersecurity updates that are involved in it, and it will improve the town's overall business to conduct business online, which is something that has become more important because of COVID-19. So this is something that will almost certainly be a warrant article in the next year or two, if it's not something we do here. Because it's something the town needs to do, so we recommend using the 330 to do these two.
Any questions on this one? This is a big one. Okay, keep going.
ADA upgrades, so total cost here is $70,000. So there's two different departments who made requests for these. So one is $20,000 for recreation, and so that would be to upgrade things like ramp access to fields, the picnic tables, making the, just a litany, there's a huge checklist, there's a big ADA review done in town, there's a huge number of items. So recreation has, you know, their starting point. And then additionally, $50,000 allocated to facilities. So this has already been allocated to facilities, so just to be clear, this money, that money is already approved. But we also agree that that's the right thing to do. Just to be clear, because we had a little bit of confusion, because there was 50,000 in the warrant, and then there was an additional 50 requested of ARPA. Pulled the 50 out of the warrant and applied the ARPA funds as part of sort of looking at the overall tax picture for the town. And so we were not 100% clear if this was a double ask, and we're looking for 100, or really just the 50. And we did clarify that, and it is just the 50. So just in case anyone's trying to kind of figure out, is it, where the buckets are coming from? It's just the 50 for facilities this year, and then just the 20 for Rec, so a total 70 here. So this was not a top five in our survey, it is a master plan goal. Well, again, this is not a significant want, it's a town need. We don't have a timeline for addressing ADA compliance in town, but it is something that we must eventually do. As a note, the 70,000 does not get us to full ADA compliance in town. It starts the process, and it allows both recreation and facilities to start checking things off of that list. Yeah, any questions on this one?
If I may?
Yes.
So on the 20,000 for recreation, is ADA, the ADA, not the ADA Committee anymore, the, was it the SP?
SPAC.
SPAC, thank you, I was going there, Andrew, thank you. So are they in agreement, or have they had any comment on how the recreation spends the 20,000? Are they in agreement? I'm sure they're supportive of anything that gets done, but specifically, I didn't know if you had any feedback from SPAC.
So are you saying it's a separate, a separate group outside of the Recreation Department in Recreation, or just Recreation?
No, just, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
No, so outside of Recreation, you know, our prior ADA Committee SPAC now. Again, obviously, they would be supportive of any upgrades that get done that were on the list, I'm sure. But I just want to make sure on the 20,000 that they were supportive of, whether it's for ramps or if there was anything specific given to what it was going to be used for.
Yep, so I can tell you exactly, I'm looking at the proposal now, and I apologize, I think I said ramps, I'm not seeing it there. So I'm pulling ramps from somewhere else. So specifically, the replacement of water fountains and picnic tables that are located within public playgrounds and parks. The amenities of the court and forms do not meet ADA standards. The town will introduce ADA-compliant picnic tables at the Fayetteville Playground Pavilion and Townhouse Playground. We will also remove three water fountains and replace them with ADA-compliant water bottle filling stations. These stations are located near a field schools, Fayetteville Playground, and Woodward School, and Tuit Fields. Yes, they would allow us to have significant impact on the short term, as we plan a much larger capital expenditure in the future.
Andrea, thank you, that was actually very helpful. I would imagine they would be supportive of any or all of those items, so thank you.
Yeah, and I'm happy, so I've tried to like synthesize down all the different proposals we have, but I've got, you know, significant, significant paperwork behind all these, and I will share them all with the committee so you have kind of the full backing behind everything as well.
And Lisa, we could also, as part of this process, assuming that the Select Board supports this, suggest that this particular project or these projects be coordinated between REC and SPAC to make sure everybody's on the same page, so basically that a requirement of the process going forward, which sounds to me like a good idea.
Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you, Sam.
So I've got one question for the Select Board. What does the last statement in the first sentence mean? $50,000 already allocated to facilities as part of fiscal year '22 property tax reduction, what does that mean?
It was our, the warrant is '22, it's fiscal year '23, sorry, let me adjust that.
So Kathy, it was on the warrant as part of the capital article, and we pulled it off the warrant and already voted that we would use 50,000 of ARPA towards the facilities ADA.
Okay, I knew that, it was just the fiscal year '22 was throwing me, okay, so I'm.
I apologize, I had put '22, I think I, yeah, but fiscal year is '23, that's correct.
Sorry, Andrea.
Catch, nope, 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 that's okay, that's my error.
Okay, all right, keep going.
All right. Signage for the Southborough Historic District, so this is $26,532. It's not a top five in our survey, but it is a master plan goal. It's to purchase signage to mark the Southborough Centre Historic District, so there's a couple of different signs that are part of this package. So again, this is not a significant town want, but it is a master plan goal. And just thinking about kind of how this money needs to be spent, right? There's a lot of ambitious projects in here, this one is just very straightforward and very executable. And, you know, we know we need to spend this money in a timeline, and so this felt like a good candidate because it's something that we just, we know we can take it off the list. Any questions here? All right. Okay, so now we're moving into the items where the dollar values are less defined. So this is where, you know, we had recommendations for certain amounts, in some cases the committee tweaked it up and down. But overall, this is, I think, where we spent a lot of our time as a committee, who's kind of working out some of these numbers. So the first in this bucket is a property tax abatement. So we are recommending half a million dollars towards this. So that's including the money that was already allocated towards fiscal year '23. So that's including the money that was already allocated towards fiscal year 23. And I have a full reckoning of that in the last slide, so you'll be able to see it. But effectively, what ends up happening is there's about $400,000 left in this pot at this point. And so this would be to apply towards warrant articles to pull them out of the warrant and reduce the overall property tax burden over the next couple of years. So this was not just a top five in our survey, but this was by, by a fair bit, the number one thing that came back on our survey. It is not a master plan goal. Right? So, sorry.
No, keep going.
Okay. Right, so number one wanted in the survey. Trying to find a number for this is tricky because it's, I think, as we kind of learned, moving through the process in February and March, to kind of understand what we needed to apply to the warrant this year. The numbers don't really solidify until we get much closer to town meeting. And so really, this year, we ended up using a little over $100,000. We've been told that the next couple of years will be a little bit more capital heavy. So this allows for 200 for each of the next two years or 400 one year and zero the next, right? It provides some flexibility depending on what comes up without really absorbing all the money that is part of the ARPA fund. So, so this number is really a balanced number as we were thinking about how to use it. And I will say, because I know Andrew, you'd sent the note around asking about the Northborough Road culvert. Right? So I, I think as other things come up, right, what's useful here is that you can think, is this something that would be a warrant article? And if so, do I use this money instead? Right? That's, that's the goal here. So it's, it's pretty flexible. The one thing I would say is that the goal of this money is, is really to be drawing down property tax for Southborough residents. So if it gets used earlier, it's something I would keep really good track of and I would try hard to make sure that it doesn't become an excuse to allow more money to go in, in future years.
Okay.
Any questions on this one?
I think we'll have a lot of questions on this one when we start discussing, but we, we get it, we, we, we see it.
Okay. Needs-based economic relief. So this one's looking for $70,000. This is not a top five in our survey. This is not a master plan goal. Really, the committee just felt that this was the correct thing to do. So the property tax relief is something that benefits property owners in town. It does not necessarily benefit everyone in town, so there will be folks that get left out of that. There are also folks who are struggling in town in ways that can't be mitigated with, you know, $100 less tax burden in 2023 or 2024. And so we felt it was the right thing to do to set aside money that's specifically geared towards needs-based economic relief. So the recommendation here, and I will say this is one that we struggled with a lot to figure out what does this actually look like, who would manage something like this? Shopsey ultimately made a request for $70,000 for sort of overall economic relief. We started looking around for who could potentially administer it. The Southborough Board of Commissioners of the Trust Fund is the best group that we found to be able to do that. You can't actually transact the money directly over to them. You need to just set it aside as ARPA funds and transact it out there, you know, as each need came through. So it's a little messy, but we felt strongly that this is something that is important and correct to do. And especially, it's, it's one of the stated goals of the ARPA money.
Can I ask a question, Kathy?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, thank you. Andrea, so were you, I, I'm not sure if the ARPA committee was aware that through the through the initial fundings that were done through
CARES.
CARES, thank you, Chelsea, that through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the town, and Chelsea, you may want to speak to this instead of me. You, you kind of coordinated the effort. I think you know where I'm going with this.
Yeah.
Okay.
So thanks, Lisa. So as part of the CARES program, we did install a program called the Rent and Mortgage Assistance Program. And it was a pretty rigorous application that residents had the opportunity to put in for funds based on a, a structure based on income and a whole bunch of other requirements. And I believe we were able to help 13 to 15 families through that program to give them some rent and mortgage relief. So that was definitely something that was was utilized by the residents. And I think that this would kind of dovetail into that. Did you talk about requirements for this? Or did you have any ideas based on the feedback that you got from people on if, if this, if the other program, the rent and mortgage assistance program came up or if this was kind of just you thought it was the right thing to do?
So we don't have, I, I wouldn't say that I have deep specifics on it. When we've talked about it, the, the discussion has been around it being sort of broad, right? That, that it can serve a number of different needs. I think this one in particular, if this is something that the select board votes to move forwards with, we'll need a little bit more care put around it to kind of finalize it out. But right now, it's, it's a value. There's also some administrative overhead that goes with it. There's some sort of receipt, there's a contract that needs to be signed for money to go to individuals that are, that the consulting firm we have can help administrate, right? So that would also have to be within that $70,000. So there's, there's, this one's, it's not entirely straightforward and will require a little bit more thought put around it. But right now, what we have is a number attached to it.
One of the challenges that we have with the rent and mortgage program was that it could not be used to pay for taxes. It could only be used for rent and mortgage. So I think that's something else we would need to consider on, if we decided to move forward, what would essentially qualify and, you know, maybe work with CSS to figure out what, what's in our purview versus not.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding and reading through it is that it's, it's quite broad and that it's, you know, we could use this in whatever way was necessary to kind of serve the public good. But again, I think, I think this requires some boundaries put around it if it's something you decide to move forward with.
Yeah. Well, I also think the confidentiality of it. You know, we would need to figure that piece out because that was a big part of the rent and mortgage program. So so this is an interesting proposal. So, thank you.
So Andrew, did you look at, instead of funneling through the Southboard Board of Commissioners of the Trust Fund, instead, working with Youth and Family Services, which already does this on a daily basis. They've got, and they, they basically take applications for need from, from residents, screen them. And then if they believe there should be some funding, they ask the, their 501(c)(3) entity that supports them to basically fund it. Did you, did you look at it, doing it that way?
We didn't. And that's certainly another way we could do it. Again, this was one, in, in general, I would say, our approach to this is that we were trying not to create projects. We didn't have the time or to, to really be trying to make projects. We were looking for groups to come forwards with projects that they had. But this is one that we, we had, we sort of poked around to see if anyone was, thought that there was use there. Shopsey came back and said yes and sort of gave this number. But we had to kind of start seeing what kind of framework we could put it in. But again, I think this one, I, I am not wedded to any of the details for how this is administered at this point. I think there's lots of different ways it could be done. As a committee, we just didn't have the bandwidth to really finalize out a project for it.
Okay, good enough. When we talk about the details later, so that's fine. Go ahead.
Add a point to your point. I, I think that to me, these kind of programs work best the closer you are to the actual need. And I think as you're suggesting for Youth and Family Services, I think we have a number of, of programs out there that actually are in this business already and are connected to the community and have a good sense of who needs this kind of support. And I would suggest that you've got groups like the Senior Center, for example, serves the population that has a lot of these needs. The Taxation Aid Committee actually is running very low on money these days. I think they do a good job of processing applications. Organizations like the Food Pantry, for example, again, are close to the people who need this kind of support. So I think we could move some of this money in those kind of directions if we can do that administratively without creating a lot of additional administrative burden for us or the existing committees out there. So I think there are a number of really effective places to use this money that we can sort out as we move forward here and get it, get the money to the right place at the right time with reasonable review and confidence that we're actually helping the right people. So I think this is a great opportunity.
Yeah, and maybe it, maybe, I mean, maybe divvying it, that makes more sense or putting a general call out that this money exists and folks can route people through to it. You know, you won't be able to transact this out into individual groups. That's not allowed under ARPA. So it'll have to like kind of sit as a project and go out like use by use. Which in some ways might make it easier if it's split out across multiple groups because there's no sort of the money all still sits in one spot. Anyway, so, so yes, I think bottom line is this one needs some finalizing as a project because it didn't come to us whole cloth. But again, this is, this is, we thought this was important and we have some money allocated towards it.
Good.
Okay, keep going.
Uh, sidewalk repair and installation. So this one, we're looking for $750,000. This is a top five in our survey. This is a master plan goal. Consistently, when we look at surveys from the past, sidewalks are always a top one. Right? So it's allocating funds to DPW for sidewalk work from repairs to new installations. So just to sort of talk about again, this flexible number, the original request from DPW was for $400,000. We had spoke with Karen and when she kind of looked through her whole list of projects, there was up to about $1.2 million of work that could be achieved within the ARPA timeframe. So when we kind of were trying to balance against our other priorities and how significant the want is for sidewalks in town, we came up with a $750,000 number. 1.2 just didn't leave us enough bandwidth to do other things that had come in. But, but we really did think the town should be committing towards a significant sidewalk work. And so that's where this number is coming from. Questions here?
Obscene news.
I, I have some questions, okay. Pardon me. So coming back to one of the earlier slides is about the timeframe in which money has to be spent, right?
Yes.
So SLF or F funds may only be used for costs incurred within this five-time period beginning March 3, 2021, with all funds obligated by end of the year 2024 and all funds spent by December 31, 2026. So I think that I'm very interested in this. I've just, could you speak to the issue of like this isn't like some of these other issues where it's, it's actually difficult to spend some of this type of money fast because you need to develop plans. Plus, there's a whole process of selecting where these sidewalks would be, whether it require removal of trees and all of these things are have become increasingly complicated. So my concern is just, do you think that that amount of money can be spent within the required timeframe? Seems like it, we should be able to do it by encumber it by the end of 2024 and then spend it by 2026. But I don't know, did you speak to Karen about that or what are your?
Yeah, so that was where, and I'm trying to go through my notes here. So the 1.2 million would be doing the Corderville Road, Richards Road,
Okay.
Woodland, St. Mark's North, a shared use along Framingham Road. And then the Marlboro Road, the intersection at Newton Street. And then I think Parkerville Road South, no, no, it was just those ones. That was what the 1.2 got you to. And I think we dropped the shared use on Framingham Road and the Marlboro Road intersection in Newton Street. If you get to this around 750, but that's the 1.2 basically represented like a set of, a discrete set of projects that Karen felt were doable within that timeline. And so we'd be looking to do less than that. And I think the other thing that's useful to kind of think about with the ARPA money. So we do, again, and I'll share all the full proposals with everyone. They all have, you know, timelines on them. And so everything we're proposing here should be completed within the timeline allotted by ARPA. If you get to the end of 2023 and it looks like this money won't be spent, you can reallocate it. You aren't, you know, committed because you're saying it now that this is what we're going to do, right? So if you realize that there's going to be $100,000 left over in sidewalk funds because of unforeseen issues with trees, you could move that money into something else, which becomes more challenging as you get closer to the deadline. But, but just, just I think it's useful to, to think about it that way too, is that there's other things we can always pull to, right? You could pull capital items off warrants.
But you're going to do that past the end of the year 2024 though, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions on this one?
Nope.
Uh, premium pay for eligible town employees. So to provide some, so overall, we're looking for $300,000. This was a top five in our survey. It's not a plant master plan goal. So this is a one-time premium pay to all allowable town employees. So again, these are non-exempt folks who worked in person during the pandemic. We're looking for, it's $1,000 for every part-time employee, $5,000 for every full-time employee and per the, the poll of staff, it ends up being about $300,000 total if you were to do that. We only, we received a request from fire and police and both asked for that amount for part-time and full-time employees. When we looked at the difference between including all the eligible town employees, the difference was $80,000. I'd have to check my number. It's, it's it's not small, but it's also not huge. And when we started looking at who is in that bucket, right? You know, it's DPW workers, facilities workers who were potentially working in those areas, right? It's, it's, it's all the folks who had to show up in person through the pandemic for the town. And we felt like that the right thing to do was to extend that same premium pay to anyone who was working in person because it became very challenging very quickly to start parsing out who was doing more hazardous work, what where.
Say that list again, Andrea.
So, hang on, I can, let me grab it so I can look at it. Give me one second.
It's about 70 employees, something like that, roughly 70 or so.
Yeah. Do you want me to pull it up? Is that helpful?
We still see the actual slide.
Yeah, I know. Hold on. Sorry. Okay, let me know, you can see.
Yes.
Okay. So this is what the list looks like. So Treasurer, Public Buildings and Property Management, Police Department, Fire Department and Public Works.
Any questions on this list?
I have one, Kathy. I, I guess Andrea, if I could just understand, I, I, I get the point of this list and, and, and find a limited to those in person. But I think, did you consider, a, a lot of people kept the town going during the time of COVID. It wasn't easy. There were a lot of people that stepped up to make it happen. Is there a reason that you were specific to just people that actually came to work versus the town employees as a whole that kept the town going and kept business moving?
Yeah, because that's, that's who's eligible per premium pay. That's, that's, it's, it's in person. There's a, there's just a requirement on that.
Okay, thank you.
What about teachers?
We reached out to the school. They, there was no one that was considered eligible. It's the non-exempt piece. The teachers are exempt workers.
Okay.
Andrea, I can't read the numbers on the spreadsheet there.
Sorry.
Was that 70, 70 or something?
Uh, the total number you're looking for is 65, probably less because there's a, yeah, 64.
Okay, thanks. Rough idea.
Andrea, did you take into consideration people who had left the department already during that time or somebody who's newer to the department?
So I just reached out and got the list. I think So I just reached out and got the list. Um, I think, uh, Mark, I think it went through you. I haven't done any further vetting on the list than that.
Okay, thank you.
My sharing back, uh, the main slide.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions on this?
Nope, keep going.
Okay. All right, so here is our, uh, summary recommendations. So we had the senior center, four hundred thousand twenty already allocated. Youth and family services, seventy six thousand, the board of health temporary staffing, one hundred and ten, five hundred. Completion of Peninsula Trail. Um, and again, the fifty thousand has already been allocated out of here, right? So one ten is total, but fifty of that is already allocated. Completion of the Peninsula Trail and other trail enhancements was two oh seven forty seven. The town purchase of the national grid property was two fifty two. The technology infrastructure updates, three thirty, the ADA upgrades. Twenty thousand dollars because fifty is already accounted for in this five hundred number here. Because that came out of the warrant article. Uh, signage for South Borough Historic District, twenty six, five thirty two. Then the property tax abatement at five hundred thousand. So there's three ninety, four eighty five currently remaining after the fifty thousand that were taken out for the ADA improvements. In the fifty nine thousand five fifteen for the breakneck hill remediation work. Seventy thousand for needs based economic relief, seven fifty for the sidewalks, repair and installation. Three hundred for premium pay for eligible town employees. There's five thousand dollars that has to come out of this money for an audit that gets triggered because of the money. There was two thousand dollars that came out for the mailer. There is this TBD number around the strategic solutions. That's the consultant we had. We have used her very little in this. Um, so I don't know what this number will be. We currently, um, if we look at the total. We have three million fifty one thousand two hundred forty one dollars to spend. This sums to three million forty nine thousand dollars seventy nine. We should have another three in there because of, uh, the way the board of health staffing went. So there should be about five thousand dollars remaining right now. And that it would surprise me if that wasn't sufficient to cover the consultant, but, um, if I'm wrong, then something will just need to be adjusted.
So I think on the consultant, um, there's more than just your usage of that contract. I think it's up to fifty thousand dollars and she's done some work on the FEMA and CARES claims. So, um, we can certainly get an updated number from Carla on what the running tally is, um, for her time. But it it would not be just solely, um, your committee's time.
So is that another so that so that was also voted then to come out of the, okay, all right. I didn't have that as like a as a line item in that list. Okay.
Yeah.
Can we get her that number soon so that she because you're gonna be overdrawn, um, once I know it's in here?
I'm sure we can request that, um, easily from Carla.
So Andrea, except for what we just said, did you consider your committee work done at this point?
Yes, so we have one more meeting next week, um, to do some tidying up on minutes and things. But otherwise, um, we were considering ourselves complete. But yeah, that's where we are.
Because if we want to use a slide kind of where we're going to refer to the one. Then what you might want to do is once we get you the consulting number, the final number is possibly just the five hundred thousand dollars, so it still balances.
Yeah, we can probably do that in our meeting next week. We can adjust to get it to be back in balance. It it'll likely either come out of, well, I I won't guess it will come out of, we'll we'll finalize it next week.
Right, so I think there's some general questions, so let's start with with those. Before we get going, though, um, thank you and your committee for this. This is outstanding work. Your hope committee, you know, this is a powerhouse committee. I think this is your first one, um, that you've been on as far as town stuff goes. So congratulations, you've done a yeoman's job and, um. Great work here. So we all thank you as far as this work, the timing you've done it, the the speed. And the creativity shown with all the recommendations.
Well, thank you, and thank you to the rest of the committee.
Yes, to everyone. Okay, so, um, I'm just gonna start as how I can see people. AD?
Or, um, I want to read her, sorry. Reiterate again, I think this is outstanding work. You know, th- there are some elements of this, right, that are. Are for salaries and things like that, but they're for things we've kind of already discussed. But it is pretty focused on, again, I'm offering just kind of comments rather than questions. But I I like that it's, you know, very focused on mostly, um, capital items. It makes sense to me. I mean, I think the. That whatever we do should give a lot of deference to the recommendations that the committee has made. Because the committee has gone through a. Very thorough process to come up with these recommendations. So I guess, you know, one, one question we have. And I guess it's for the board is, you know, in terms of next steps. What we do. And I mean, there really isn't like, uh, we should act sooner rather than later. But we don't have a a pressing deadline to commit to. Allocating all this money in this exact way by X date, right? And I the part of my thinking is that when there are. Recommendations that come in that are so big, I mean, this is three million dollars, which is like a, we're we're. We're not gonna get this much money from federal government for a stimulus related thing for like a decade plus. So just. I think there's some time on my end to just kind of continuing to think about it while also giving a lot of deference to. The recommendations and also maybe even some time for. This kind of gets some additional publicity and then there's some feedback maybe from other committees of. You know, is there an angle that we didn't think of that we really should? So anyway, those are just some initial reactions. Again, there I don't think I asked any questions, but just my initial reaction.
Well, you're right in that we don't have to, um, have a sweeping vote on this right away. We can take these one at a time in the order we think makes sense because some are certainly, um, higher priority as far as timing goes. You know, the the work started on the senior center renovation, right? The architect piece of it or the engineering piece of it. So we can take these in the or we can basically order these in the way we think we should look at them and take them one at a time. Which would allow people to come forward and talk about that specific item on that night. Anything else, AD?
No, and you know, that's something I threw out there that I'm very interested in what other members of the board think about the next steps in the process here.
So why don't we see what questions we have on the report itself and then we'll go back and talk about what we think the process should be going forward? Lisa?
Thank you, Kathy, and thank you to the the full ARPA committee. I know you guys were on a pretty tight schedule and and you put together a pretty comprehensive report. I I have a a couple of questions and comments. Was there any consideration given to items that were currently on the capital plan or were these outside? Well, some of these were on the capital plan, but overall, taking a look at what's on the capital plan and making your determinations of the best use.
So we have two members from capital, um, on our committee. And, you know, they were involved throughout the entire process. And so we didn't specifically line up against capital because we had so many different considerations that were happening in parallel. I don't think there's. Any capital recommend, I'm just looking at what we have here. I I don't think there would be anything here that's gonna not be on their plan, except for maybe the senior center. Well, because that's been getting kicked down the road. So I would say, no, we have not lined it up one to one with the capital plan.
Okay, so I mean, I I obviously with the capital planning policy we have in place, I I would suggest that the board. Have capital review some of these items that are on here. So they fall within the policy. Second question is, I noticed on one of the items that was not funded. Regarding the eighty five hundred dollars for a consultant for Shopsey. And the reason was staffing position should be provided through the warrant. My understanding was that was a one year position. They're not looking for a full time position.
So it's an extension of a position that's happening now. And again, I think in general, our, what we were trying to do was avoid really starting to create positions with one time money. That was advice we had from the consultant as well. Um, and so there are, I think, two staffing pieces that we ended up not funding that. And, um, the salary increases, um, for the board of health grant, uh, for the the shared. Staffing.
Okay, so. Okay, maybe we're we're unclear on my, I thought that that position was was consultant, not looking outside of what's being done now as far as administering. I know the chair of Shopsey is here. I don't know if she wants to.
The the ask is one year. I think overall, we've been trying really hard not to start doing staffing funding that could then kind of continue on. If this, all this money is at the purview of the select board, if you would like to use the money in a different way, you're always welcome to.
Okay, no, just just a question. I know that that was one of the things that came up. Let's see. Again, I would I would ask the board to consider sending capital items to capital, seeing as these are outside of the current tenure plan. As one of the steps, I know Kathy, you don't want to get into steps moving forward, but I'm just gonna throw that.
Oh, we can. I mean, but I think let's get the questions asked of the report first, um, and then we can decide what our steps are.
Um, let me just quickly go through here. It was fine with that. It was fine with that. I think those were my major items, you know, as far as is review from capital. So I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you, Kathy.
Same.
Thanks and thanks Andrea and and committee. Um, I've actually observed most of these meetings and, uh, I think the group has done a superb job. Tight timeframe, lot of moving parts, important to get a wide range of input that that you've done. And again, kudos also particularly to Andrea for keeping this on track and could have gone off the rails in many ways. And it actually wound up at the finish line with, I think, a very good report. And one of the things that I reinforced, uh, to comment made earlier here, I think there are a couple of things that are time sensitive, like the senior center for the construction project. Activity this construction season, I think, is important to keep moving. And youth and family services, for example, I think getting that clinical support, uh, as soon as possible is something that's very worthwhile. So we need to have a conversation about the priorities. Uh, one question I have is that, um, not too long ago, when we started this process, I remember there's a little bit of conversation. Andrew raised a point about, uh, possibilities for spending this money. And one possibility was a, uh, pick a large project that might take the bulk of this money for something that was really significant that the town. You know, would not be able to afford otherwise. And that was an interesting one to me as well. Although when I look at this list, I'm I'm very happy with the list at this point. As a matter of fact, I got a few things I would ask some questions about. But generally, I think this is a great result. And Andrea, was there a conversation around looking at the at the one big option and that was, uh, rejected for whatever reason?
Yeah, so I'd say the the one that. Looked to be a big, the potential for being one big, so there's nothing that would have taken the full three million that that wasn't. We we didn't have that option on the table. We did look at funding sidewalks to the full one point two million, um, which is something that we could have done to dibs or, you know, a significant portion of this money. I will say that I think similar to some of the hesitancy and some of the questions, right, that was to get it done by the twenty twenty six deadline, which I think gave members some pause. Um, and it also just again, when I look at this list, I I have trouble thinking of what we would take out in exchange for that. Um, and so that that was sort of where the balance came.
And I have that same issue. A lot of these things are, I think, are near and dear to me at least, so I would resist removing them. But, uh, interesting question there. And again, kudos to the whole committee. Great job, tight timeline, excellent result. Thank you.
Chelsea? Thank you. Um, thanks Andrea and committee for putting this together. And Andrea, I think this was your first committee and your first time being chair. So kudos to you for kind of rallying the troops and, um, I know that you guys met frequently and you had some long meetings. So, um, I really give you a lot of credit for putting yourself out there and and doing an excellent job. So thank you and everyone else. Just a couple of questions. I, on your proposals not funded, you have, um, in implementation of interactive conference room capabilities, which is. Five hundred thousand dollars, which, um, is obviously a significant amount of money. I'm not sure if you're aware that we, um, did purchase an owl, um, through the current FY twenty two IT budget. To, um, allow for hybrid meetings to be held in the McCullough hearing room. And so I'm just curious, so we so we have not outfitted the other conference rooms, um, although I think that probably will be. Discuss at this, um, board, hopefully in the near future about allowing that capability. Can you just elaborate on why this wasn't funded and if it was because of the not having a hard number on that and kind of where the proposal came from?
Yeah, so this came from, um, our. I'm just trying to pull it up so I don't say it wrong. From our IT group, which is the the MTC group, I believe is the abbreviation. Yeah, and it was to do a a pretty significant overhaul, um, in the conference room to allow for, uh, the the hybrid capabilities that you're talking about. And so when we went back, um, I wasn't the one who had the conversation with them, um, but someone else on the committee did. And really, when they were talking about it, it was clear that it wasn't. There were four proposals that came from MTC. There were the, um, the website, the, um, wifi updates, the interactive conference rooms. And then the townwide event and scheduling of registration system. And so the two that we funded were the two that were ready to go projects and the other two, um, were just not in the same place. The the money was a little less clear, the software and capabilities and technologies were a little less clear. Um, and so I I I think MTC is is content with this approach as we have it. The owls I have heard rumor of, um, I don't have any proposal around that. If there is like discreet money that is needed for that, that's something something that could be considered. But this is sort of as as the proposals as we reviewed them.
And Mark, feel free to chime in here on how how much the owl was to do in the townhouse.
I think it was about twenty five hundred dollars for the owl itself, as well as the command center.
Okay, okay, so we're talking about a significant. Difference in price there. Okay. Thanks Andrea for that, um, answer. In terms of the, um. The property tax abatement of five hundred thousand, I think I would be interested in understanding out of this. List that you have suggested here, um, what is currently on the on the docket for a future fiscal year? That actually would apply outside of the five hundred thousand. So for example, I know we've been carrying the senior center renovation for several years. Like I think that actually, if we did it sooner rather than later, would be tax relief in a future year. So that would be helpful to understand too, to under, to just see kind of where it's gonna fall. Um, and and I actually think you're gonna be above the five five hundred thousand, um, of the recommendation here, which I think is a good thing. I think, you know, the more that we can either accelerate or, um, relieve in the next year or two, um, is is a positive. And. With, and this is just a, just a thought for the board to consider. You know, I think the youth and family services, mental health, um, is a good recommendation. One of my concerns with it, and I think that the ARPA committee discussed this, was if that position could actually be filled, right? Because there's such a demand for that, um, area right now everywhere. Um, and so as we kind of think about next steps, um, coming up with timelines for if it's not spent or. Scheduled to be spent by X date, then we have to have a process to kind of reallocate those funds. You know, because I certainly don't want them to go unused, but would be supportive of trying some of those, um, recommendations that you, um, the ARPA committee had brought forward. So, um, I think those are all my kind of questions, um, for the presentation for now. But thanks again, Andrea, for putting this together and to your team.
Yep.
So Chelsea, I've got.
I see Joe's hand. I think Joe wants to speak to the capital piece because he can probably rattle off right now what's on capital.
Well, I couldn't speak to cat capital, but I just wanted to respond to sort of the real allocation of funds. I mean, the way the way that it's structured now, the categories that you can't spend on are miniscule. You could literally take any leftover funds and basically just dump them into into general fund expenditure just about. So it's not, you're not really gonna have to worry about, you know, reapplying what you get back that isn't spent from other projects. So it's not, you're not really gonna have to worry about, you know, reapplying what you get back that isn't spent from other projects. You can li- literally just sort of almost dump it into the, into the general fund and reduce, reduce taxes. As far as capital goes, um, the Senior Center is obviously there. The technology came in. The wifi was on the capital plan from the prior um, technology head and we in capital have discussed it and sort of held it out there, knowing that it was coming. So that, that was, that's, you can include that as a capital, you know, a capital plan article. Sidewalks, we've had to dump several times because we were looking to curb tax rates. Um, so sidewalks have been one of those neglected capital items that, you know, just sort of sits out there. It's sort of been like the Senior Center where you just sort of keep kicking, kicking, you know, 200,000 out of the budget, uh, out of the capital budget, because you know that the town doesn't want to spend more money than it has to. So, you know, by the time you add up, you know, those, those items, um, you know, you're easily looking at, you know, close to a million and a half, um, which is about half of the, half of this actual expenditure. And that's, that's really, those are ones that have been sitting out there and some of them have been ones that have been sitting out there and just neglected. So I would say that, you know, as far as from a capital expenditure um, perspective, I'd say this, this list actually favors our capital expenditures.
What do you mean by favors, Joe?
Well, i- in terms of, if you look at the ARPAScope from, from what we got, in terms of the way that the money's supposed to be spent and the guidelines that we were given to the categories that we were supposed to pay attention to. Um, you know, you're looking at about half, at least half this money really going into sort of hard capital.
I get it. I get what you mean now. Okay, all right, that's helpful. So the national grid property is not on the capital plan, correct?
I, I would, I would have to refer to Jason on that one. I don't know.
I don't think it is.
But in terms, in terms of property, that being able to buy property is, is being able to also buy a capital asset that we can, that we can use later or sell later. So that's, you know, that's a nice capital item to have and it's, if there'd been a bigger piece of property, I might have been for it because, because of that stance.
So Chelsea, can I go back to a comment you made just a second ago? Um, if you look at what's being proposed here, if we were going to do each one of these in the future anyway, even without ARPA money, and there's definitely some in that category, maybe not all, but some, then each one of these is going to reduce future property taxes. Um, right. You know, to me, the 500 is just kind of the catch-all that additionally, you can also do another 500 on something else that we haven't really thought about yet that's coming up, um, that hopefully is more one-time and doesn't, I'm doing anything to bump the tax rate up and down. Um, but you know, the whole thing's gonna reduce taxes if we were gonna do them at some point anyway.
But that, that's what I think that is what I'm asking for is break, add a column to this grid and say what we were gonna do anyway, so that way we know.
So. And I, we can do that Andrea, I don't think.
Yeah, that's not for you Andrea. Sorry, that was more of a for us to think about.
Because it sounds like this committee has finished their work and other than possibly changing this slider around a little bit, so it still fits um, when we get the um, Strategic Solutions Consulting number in there, that their, their work is done. They have done what we've asked, what their charge was and they are ready to um, say, we're done. So do you still agree with that Andrea, that other than some cleanup work, you're done?
Yeah, I do. Um, so again, we have a meeting uh, that we are planning for next Tuesday um, to kind of do our tidying up um, minutes and things like that. Um, we can add, adjusting this um, slide to be whole to that piece. Um, Chelsea, if you've got the full number for uh, the Strategic Solutions Consultant, you can send that to me, then I can make sure we've got the numbers kind of aligned. Um, but yeah, no, then I, I think our intent is to be complete next week.
Okay. Um, is Mr. Martell still with us? I've got a question for him. There he is. Hey, Tim.
Hey.
Um, so the, the 3:30 for technology and research updates, so MPC was happy with that as far as the two out of the four things?
I believe so.
Very good. Good, good, good. Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions on the report itself? All right, so um, Andrea, again, sincerely, thank you very much and the hard work your help committee did. All you guys, I know that um, everything was done in a truncated fashion. You had a, um, you did have a high-power committee there, look at all the, the people on it. So um, thank you guys.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, does a hand raised?
Um, so can we bring over Ms. Jazinski? Hey, Dorian.
Hi.
Hey.
Can you see me?
No, I can hear you now.
Okay, um, I actually um, wanted to ask just a couple of questions on this um, work. Hold on.
There you are.
There I am. Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you. Um, I just had a couple of quick questions. Um, I appreciate all the work that this committee did. Uh, they did a really good job. I just have a couple of concerns. Um, we had asked for the $8,500 to continue um, to have some help um, with CHOPSY going forward, especially since we have this new MBTA Communities um, law that's coming down to affect um, housing in the town and they have some pretty strict regulations, which Mimi is very well um, aware of because she worked on sending a letter to the state um, just to voice the town's concerns. Um, and I was part of that um, small group that put that letter together along with Andrew. Um, we need some type of support. We don't have a budget on CHOPSY. We don't have administrative funding of any kind and we wanted to use a consultant to just help guide us through the process, try to help us find some more grant monies. Um, a- and so that was the purpose of this. It's a one-year position. It is not to be carried out further than that, but we are definitely gonna need some help to get through this, this new law that's coming at us. And um, to finish trying to get the implementation of our five-year strategic plan for the um, housing production plan going as well. We're volunteers on this. We have no budget. We have, we have nothing to work with. So we had asked for $8,500 for a consultant. Five hours a week, that was it. Um. When we spoke with our person from um, MAPC who had done our five-year um, strategic implement, implementation plan, we had gotten a $15,000 grant for that. She strongly recommended that we ask for $500,000 in ARPA funds because we were grossly underfunded for housing, for affordable housing. So that is why we sent that second um, request in. And I understand uh, there was concern with the money should be coming from CPC. We are having a very difficult time getting any monies from CPC. We have asked several times. We have said, asked, gone through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, asking them to request the funding. And it's a back and forth. In the meantime, we have lost opportunities to do anything. So our hands are tied. We're being held hostage. We can't get any funding to do anything. And now we're not gonna even gonna have any support to help us. So I don't know how you guys think CHOPSY is gonna be effective or get anything done. We desperately need some help. And asking for $8,500, I don't think is to, asking for too much. So I would really appreciate if, if um, the committee would reconsider at least this amount of money for us, so we can continue to do what we're supposed to be doing and work with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And we're not getting cooperation from CPC funds. That, the housing money has been appropriated for us to be able to get it. We cannot get our hands on it. We can't get it to be put into the trust fund. So we were going to go forward with a Warren article and we pulled it out of good faith that they said they were gonna transfer the money. They did not. And we're gonna go with the Warren article again in the fall at this point. If, if they don't transfer the money um, before year's end, we're gonna have to, we don't have a choice, but.
So Dorian, let's stick with your, your, the easier issue, the $8,500. So there is still $390,000 that the Select Board is being given the flexibility to decide how to allocate um, before the funds um, um, run out. So we, we've got flexibility here. Lisa's brought it up, so we will discuss it. Okay, so I don't think we need to ask the ARP committee to go back and redo their spreadsheet. They, they, they're done with their work, but there is the um, $390,000 left that has not been allocated specifically to, to anything.
Okay, we're just asking for some help on CHOPSY. That's also, we can continue to do what we're doing. So I appreciate the, the time and energy that the committee has done. They did a really good job. My concern is CHOPSY, obviously, so, but thank you very much for letting me speak tonight. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Dorian.
Okay.
Okay, um, I think we're done with the ARPA discussion. I see no one else in the audience with a hand raised. So we are going to say goodnight to ARPA.
Motion to adjourn the ARPA meeting?
Second.
All right, let's do a quick real call. Uh, Ms. Luttrell.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Wood.
Hi.
Mr. Palmer.
Hi.
Mr. Martell.
Hi.
Mr. Shoner. Oh, did we already lose Tony?
I think so.
All right, I will vote aye. Um, and the May 17th ARPA Committee meeting is adjourned at 9:32. Thanks, everyone.
Andrea, you did an amazing job.
Well, thank you.
You were a great chair. You did an amazing job and thank you for everything.
We need, we need to, we need to recruit Andrea and Anne onto full-time committees.
I agree, Mimi, and I've, we've got some ideas where they are.
Permanent committees.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Have a great night.
Still smiling. Okay, goodnight, guys. Okay, um, next is Chair's Report, and this chair doesn't have a report because she knows she's gonna be Chair. Um, so Lisa, did you have your Chair's Report ready?
So I will just touch on this briefly, Kathy. Thank you. Um, so Memorial Day is coming upon us and uh, the invitation has come from the veterans for someone to speak at the ceremony. So I know Andrew had done it last year. I've done it multiple times over the years. We're just seeing if there's an interest from a member of the board to speak at the ceremony.
I'm interested. I'm gonna be out of town that weekend, unfortunately, so.
I am too. Chelsea?
I'm planning on attending um, the break. I'm happy to speak if nobody else.
Chelsea, there's something wrong with your audio.
You're digitized again.
Reconnect.
Yeah. So it sounds like she might be able to do. Is that what we heard?
Um, I can also, you're looking for um, I, I'm also uh, I'm willing if you, if uh, you want me to.
So does a Select Board member always talk? Is that what? Okay, all right. So you'll do it, AD?
This is the uh, ceremony that's in the um,
Yep.
Royal Cemetery.
At the memorial there.
There is. So Kathy, first, Chelsea hasn't done it before, so.
Chelsea, we didn't. So AD said he would. Do you wanna do it? It's a, he's.
It doesn't matter.
I, I'm.
It's okay, Veterans Day, so um, certainly if you want to do this one.
So maybe fresh face, Chelsea?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, is that at least for Memorial Day?
For Memorial Day, that's it. Um, just for the volunteer, just a reminder, uh, we have 34 people attending. We had 40 last year, so we're a little bit off this year, but that's okay. Um, so the breakfast is from 7:00 to 8:30 tomorrow morning and we look forward to all of those that have RSVP'd. It's uh, seems to be representation from a lot of different boards and committees, so it's, it's, it's a great opportunity.
Senior Center?
Um, Senior Center, yep. 7:00 to 8:30. Um, next is the upcoming scheduled meetings. I know Kathy, you had a question regarding the June meeting and I just wanted to touch on why it was done that way, um, just so you're aware. So the board has had six meetings in the month of May, including town meeting. Um, so there's obviously a lot of things going on. Some of them were executive session. Um, typically in the summer, we do one meeting in July and one meeting in August. So why we had tentatively scheduled the, the 31st was we wanted to be able to address some of the things that were brought up at town meeting, have a discussion on some of the items and pass forward on some of the items. Um, I am out of town on the 7th and Mr. Purple's out of town on the 21st, which is your first and third. So that's where the 14th came from, for the month of June, trying to find a, a pathway and also to give the board a break from, again, adding seven meetings in the month of May. So that, that was the intent of that. Obviously Kathy, you're, you're the Chair. You set the agenda. Um, that's subject to some level of change, however you wanna do it, but uh, again, that's why it was set for the 14th. And again, Mr. Purple's away on the 21st, which is your third. And again, I was away the first week, so.
Okay.
That's that, Kathy. I'll let you take that discussion from there.
Okay, thanks Lisa. So that, that helped, that's helpful. Um, I can't be there on the 14th is my problem and I, I thought we always met on the first and the third, so we did a bunch of stuff to, to be able to do that, so, um, but it, world does not revolve around my schedule. Um, is anyone else going to miss the, either the 31st or the 14th? Besides me? I, I'll be on 31st. I just can't do the 14th. Okay, so one person's gonna miss the 7th or the 14th either way. If Mark um, is gonna miss the 21st, it sounds like 7th and 21st is what. Yeah, I'll be back on 20th. So 7th and 21st is probably the better choice here now that I understand what, what caused this, um, unless anyone disagrees. So Chelsea, you'll have to run, you'll have to run the meeting on the 14th.
So you're, you're, sorry Kathy, if I misunderstood, I thought you said the 7th and the 21st are the preferred dates.
I'm saying that the 31st and then 14th seem to be preferred dates because Mark's not here on the 21st and you're not here on the 7th. I'm not here on the 14th, so we kind of cancel each other out, but um, I assume Mr. Purple is very important to these meetings, so um, so Chelsea, you'll just have to run the meeting on the 14th because I will be a long way away.
Okay.
That's fine. Really different time zone. Um, I mean, I, I, we'll see if I can remotely and I will, but I doubt if I can.
And, and one last thing Kathy is, is obviously the, the board tries. I've been on the board for five years, but sometimes there's just reasons why.
Lisa, it's fine. Enough said. It's all fine. I'll do it. So, but my next question is, um, when does the law expire as far as being able to do remote meetings? I know it's coming.
July 15th.
July 15th, right? And as far as we know, there's no intention to renew that?
Correct.
None we know of right now, right? So right now, we assume it's going to expire so that we would be back to the old rules, um, which means, yeah, you can do a remote meeting, but you gotta go to a lot of trouble, right? Um, so I assume that we're gonna be in person after July 15th?
Or before.
Or before.
You can do the 30th. That's gonna be my next question. What are we gonna do before? But we're going to do it after July 15th, right? Okay, so what does, what does everyone want to do as far as the meetings that will occur before July 15th, where we have a choice?
So.
In person.
Hybrid.
Yeah, in person. And, and the only reason we didn't tonight, Kath, was because of the executive session we had in advance, didn't know how long it was gonna go.
Okay, so we're gonna do in-person meetings, right? Uh, using the AL system, um, the hybrid AL system between now and July 15th and then after July 15th, um, they'll still be in person unless the law changes, right? And we'll continue to use AL system, correct? So we're gonna use AL.
Yeah.
Okay.
Except executive sessions.
AL works. I haven't seen it yet. Okay, so everybody agree as far as the schedule between now and the end of June?
Uh, yeah, except executive sessions. I would think we would use the uh, hybrid Zoom.
Yeah. Um, is there any expectation for an executive session between now and the end of June? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Potentially, yeah.
So without talking about anything that was talked about tonight, that the subject tonight was not complete?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, we'll talk about that later. All right, now as far as, I, I'd like to go ahead and see if we can at least um, get the schedule tentatively set for the summer, given that people are going to be go, going on vacation and I want to, to make sure we're gonna have forms, et cetera. So if, does everyone want to stick to the once a month meeting for July and August? Or do we want to, um, I just think we've got a lot to do, so I'll go along with everybody who wants to, but find a preference I do to.
I think we gotta do regular business and I, I'm a big fan of doing some more planning meetings. I thought we had a great planning meeting last year and made good progress with that, but that gets in the way of the normal sort of routine business.
And you did that in July, the planning meeting?
Uh, I don't remember. I think.
We had two meetings in July, I'm pretty confident.
Yeah. I think so.
We might even have two in August, too.
Yeah, normally we have one business meeting in July and August. That doesn't mean we don't have other meetings regarding, you know, whether we have it. Normally the board will have a retreat. I know we talked earlier this evening about um, getting together, talking about goals, how we wanna do things, how we wanna proceed as a board. um, getting together, talking about goals, how we want to do things, how we want to proceed as a board, or how you want to proceed as a support. Um, so, you know, those are the, those are those extra meetings, but, but I think we try to limit it to one business meeting. Um, you know, for, for each of July and August, but again, that doesn't prohibit us from, from doing other things.
I'm flexible and generally available with a little lead time, so.
Does everyone agree we need to do the planning meeting fairly soon? Um, in that it really shouldn't be one of the regular meetings because you need time, you need a lot of time to do the planning and do it right. Anybody disagree with that statement? Okay.
Well, just, there is a, um, as I, you know, found out when I was last year, I mean, there's a starting point, right? There is a there is a chart that has some goals that have been developed over the years. It's kind of a starting point.
Yep.
Um, and it's also a useful exercise. You go through and say, evaluate whether we've met some of the goals from the last year. But I, I agree. I like the idea of, um, having a meeting that's more just, just focused on that. Um, and to Mark's point about a retreat. I know I, we weren't, we didn't do a retreat, um, last year. I mean, you mean like a off-site retreat or a?
No, I, I, I think we're using, we're using different words for the same thing.
Okay, yeah.
Goal-setting retreat. It's just the board, um, a-again, focusing on that particular issue of goal-setting, of, of developing, you know, things that you want to do and things like that outside of regular meeting. So whatever we want to call it, I think we can agree that that's what we're looking for.
I think of it as an advance versus a retreat.
Retreat does sound like we're going someplace usually when you say retreat, um, you can retreat to something. Okay, so, um, July fifth, which is a day after July fourth, which is a Monday, is, is the first Tuesday. Do we want to skip that Tuesday and go to the next one?
Yeah, because we'll have to time it out with interdepartmental transfers, and I don't think that the finance team will be done yet, right, Mark?
Uh, yeah, I think that's, that's easy to say they won't be.
Okay.
And they've got to be done by the fifteenth, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so it sounds like twelfth should be the meeting in July, the first, the actual normal meeting.
I will be available but remote for that.
Okay, but I don't think we're getting choice twelve. Either we're gonna do it, if we're gonna stick on Tuesdays, it's either gonna be the fifth, the day after, and I'm emphasizing the day after July fourth. Yeah, my guess is.
It's fine. I, I'm happy to go in and, um, that's fine.
Do you have a different day you want to suggest besides that one?
No, no.
Right, so do I, everybody agree twelfth will be the regular July business meeting? Where we'll do the interdepartmental transfers. Right? Um, okay, then what about doing the retreat, the planning session on? Boy, I hate to wait till July twenty-six to do this. What if we did it the last part of June? So if we're gonna meet on the fourteenth, what about the twenty-eighth for that one?
I won't be here for that if you do.
Well, we, I think we need you here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna be on, I'm gonna be on vacation from the twenty-first, um, and I'll be, uh, back, uh, local on, uh, July second.
Okay, um, what about July nineteenth? I'm gone then. Um, anybody else gone on the nineteenth? I mean, I think we gotta try to get all five people to this one.
You need, you need everybody in the room.
Yeah, so I can't do the nineteenth.
One.
Twenty-six is the next one.
Doesn't have to be Tuesdays.
Yeah.
What about another day?
All right. Um, I can't do anything the week of the eighteenth. Um, so I'm looking at the week of the twenty-fifth. If we did the week of the fourth on the, you know, tail end of it, so the sixth is a Wednesday.
I'm sorry, what month are you talking about again?
Um, July. Mark's gone from the twenty-first. What, you're back July second, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we're now talking July, week of July fourth on. We've already got the twelfth scheduled, so.
What, July seventh?
On the seventh, Thursday.
I'll be, I'll be remote, but that's fine. I can still participate.
Not.
I'm holding the week of the eighteen, July eighteen, but that doesn't work for Kathy, so.
Sam?
I'm okay. Chelsea, you're out the week of the fourth, totally.
Yeah, he's out that week and the next week.
Yeah.
But if we still utilize.
She says she can remote, so she, she'll be there.
That's totally fine.
Yeah.
Just don't forget about me.
We'll go to where she is for our retreat. Um, Sam?
I'm, I'm okay that week.
Lisa, for the seventh?
Should be.
Okay, AD?
Okay.
Okay, so we got it seventh for the actual, um, planning session. That's all we're gonna do that night is plan, plan, plan. Okay, now let's go to, so we got the business meeting, we got the planning session, let's go to August. So the first Tuesday in August is the second. Anyone say no to that?
I just, uh, August is up in the air, but I'll be available for whenever the meeting is. I just don't know where I'll be.
I think the advantage of doing it, having it early in August is if something comes up, you still have some time to squeeze in a meeting.
Yeah.
With that. Chelsea, since that's after July fifteenth.
I'll have to go through the policy.
Yeah, you have to do, you know, the, the.
That's okay.
Sign the piece of paper, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Then we use that to get you in. Okay, so right now we'll do second as far as the business meeting in August. Okay, ten, and then we'll add whatever has to be added when things come up. Okay. Okay. Yes, 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 yes. Okay, all right, um. So members' report, someone was going to do a members' report on North Borough Road.
Um, before we get to that, can we take a five-minute break?
Sure. Okay. So we just sit here and wait for?
Or go catch up on the, uh.
Okay.
Various athletic contests.
Okay.
We ready for another four hours now?
Time is nine fifty-one ten. Not quite for you. We're almost there.
I hope.
You, you guys have gone much later than this before.
Don't remind us.
Okay, um.
So.
Go ahead, AD.
Okay, so the update on North Borough Road. Um, in the last couple of weeks, uh, John Reader, who, uh, a resident who spoke at town meeting, uh, reached out to Senator Eldridge's offices to, um, see if they could offer any help with this funding shortage about the North Borough Culvert. So then, um, Mark and I discussed that with the Senator's office, and initially, there seemed to be maybe an opportunity of to request some additional funding in this year's budget cycle, but it turns out that that's not uh, really feasible for this year, and Mark wrote, I thought, a very good letter to the Senator's office, kind of making the case. And, um, so that brings up the issue then of, you know, I thought there was, I thought it was very interesting that, um, the town meeting wanted to keep the, um, capital, um, request that we had for this road, even though it wasn't enough. So I, I thought there was a sentiment there to to want to complete this project. And so that naturally led into the discussion that we had, um, earlier about our town ARPA money. That seems like it is the, maybe the cleanest way to just finally get this done based on the current bids, although I will say, uh, Mr. Reader, who's also an engineer, has some ideas about, um, or is there the way you could restructure the bids to lower the price? And that's, that stuff is far more detailed than I really, um, I haven't dug into it that much, but I just wanted to give everyone an update of. We did attempt, and I thought, again, Mark's letter is very good, uh, making the case for some additional money, but just due to some kind of inside state house stuff. I don't think that there's any additional state money coming for this in two thousand and twenty-two, and, um, the best way to top off the funding is probably town ARPA money.
Or special town meeting, one article. If we want to wait that long, but I.
That's waiting a long time, though.
No, I agree. Yes, I think you're right. Um, so I can tell you, advisory didn't understand that, um, we, we, this, was this what we were told, that there is, you know, it affects one house, and they, they've got another way they can go. Clearly, we missed the issue, which is a lot of people use that it's a shorter route, um, to, to get to places, so, um, it sounds, I mean, clearly, if you had a vote at town meeting, and we get this done, and the only reason they kept it in there is because that's the only choice. They weren't allowed, Paul and, Paul would not allow that, um, article to be amended up enough to get the full eighty thousand bucks in there. So that's why they said, well, at least keep what we got, so it's, it's a starting point.
And I, I certainly remain interested in this. As a sidebar that didn't pan out, Whit Beals approached me at town meeting and suggested that, uh, he thought part of the process where MWRA, DCR took over that property, uh, there might be some obligations for them to, uh, fund infrastructure support because the stream under the culvert flows into the open channel that MWRA is responsible for. And I followed up with the MW, MWRA operations people who looked back at the, uh, memorandums of understanding, related to all that stuff. Disappointingly, we came within about two hundred feet of actually having an argument for that. In that, uh, that culvert is not on MWRA property. Had it been two hundred feet to the east, it would have been on MWRA property, and there might have been an opportunity to convince them to pay for the repair. So anyway, dead end, but, uh, interesting possibility, and we're back where we started, but needing to find money if we want to do it.
So do you four agree that this work needs to be done?
I do.
I'm not there.
Yeah, I, I would like to get a judge, just because I think that the debate about, okay, and now analyzing whether to instead abandon North Borough Road, it's gonna raise a lot of the same issues we had on the citizen request to abandon Chestnut Hill Road, and I think it's just a discussion that just kind of goes on and on and on without a clear solution. Meanwhile, prices are rising rapidly. I mean, I just, the, the sentiment from town meetings, can we please just get this done? It's really kind of an eyesore.
So, yeah, so, so just to add one other piece into this, um, so we have a bid that has been, you know, that, that was issued that we had, I think we had twenty people full bid packages. We had, uh, five responses. We have a little bidder who is willing to, you know, who is anxious to start. Um, we have the engineer who has vetted them and, and checked them, and, um, and at this point, we've you know, let the, the little bidder wants to know what's going on. And so we've let them know at this point, bids came in significantly higher than anticipated, and at this point, the town's trying to figure out the funding piece. So hopefully, we'll be back to you soon. So if we're anticipating doing something off of the existing bid, we need to act fairly soon. If it's something that we think that we're going to apply money to, and we're gonna do that as a result of putting out a new bid and seeing what happens, and hoping that what Mr. Stivers just said isn't the case, but probably could be, um, then, you know, then I guess it's not as, it's, you know, we don't have to move as quickly. Um, so that's just one piece for the board to keep in mind.
So obviously, town meeting was heard, Kathy. I, I think that the, the message at town meeting was clear. Um, but I think Capital didn't support the full amount. I would like to, Capital's meeting, I want to say the twenty-fourth, I'm not sure. I think it's the twenty-fourth. I have to look it up. I, I would suggest that we send this back to Capital and get their thoughts on this as well before we move forward. I think that still gives us enough time. I'm sorry, I'm just looking to see if it, yeah, there's a capital meeting, it, um.
It is a twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, yeah, yeah. So if we, I, I would suggest doing that, and that gives us time. Our next scheduled meeting is the thirty-first. So it's, it still gives us opportunity as well to, to then act.
And Kathy, I think one of the reasons why I'm not there yet is I, I don't think that we fully vetted this because, um, we essentially got a grant, and we're like, okay, then.
Yeah.
If the grant's gonna cover it, then it makes sense to do it. I think my, my concern is that the bid came in so much higher. I just want to make sure that this is the timing that we should be doing this, and that and that there is really no reason to go back out to bid to see if we can get it lower. I think that's what my, um, concern is with this one.
But do we agree that the grant is not going to expire? It's, it's the state ARPA money, and so it's got.
No, it does have a deadline, but it got extended.
Again?
It does. It does, it does have a deadline. Um, the deadline was actually June thirtieth of twenty-two. And, uh, we made application to, funny enough, that it came from the, um, Department of, uh, Fish and Wildlife. Um, that's where the money came from. So we, um, put a request in to extend the deadline until June thirtieth of twenty-three. So we have another year to spend, to spend this money.
So it's approved?
That was approved, yes.
Mark.
All right, so I think that Lisa's proposed plan is good. Um, Cap, Capital's meeting on a Tuesday, not a Monday, it sounds like. Okay, um, and then we will take it up the next week and, um, try to make decisions to what to do to go forward.
Well, one thing that would be helpful for me is to see the, um, the, the bid that went out for it. Um, the bid packet for, for that. Um, if you can send that to us before the next meeting.
Sure.
Excellent.
Mark, was there any conversation about the, uh, the bids that came back, uh, with the, the low bidder to say, um, you know, are there other ways that you consider doing this that would be less expensive? Or did we send out a bid package that, uh, constrained the bidders so tightly on a particular way to do it that we didn't really explore? Are there three alternatives that give us, you know, somewhat different outcomes, but maybe we'd be satisfied with something that was less expensive? How did that?
So I, I, I mean, the engineer didn't put together a multiple choice. You know, said, you know, why don't you pick, you know, pick which one you think works for you, because then you don't have an apples-to-apples approach.
Understand, yes.
So, so the engineer put together the design and, uh, and the approach, and, and that was what the bidders had to bid on.
Um, asking the engineer, were there other things that you considered that might be good alternatives here? Versus that's the only one that you think is going to work from an engineering standpoint, the only approach? That might be useful context, I think. And, and if the engineer came back and said, well, no, I did what I thought I was asked to do, but if I were designing from scratch, I do something that was half as costly or whatever, which you're right, could send us back through the bid cycle, but maybe we could find a better way to do it. I don't know. Again, my bottom line is I'd like to get it done, and, um, I, I don't want to risk delaying things till we run out of the, the grant money here.
So I've got two questions for you. Um, why was the number that we carried so far off, number one? Number two, advisory. Number two, advisory believes or believed that, I don't know if they still do, but believed that there was in-house expertise at one point that can actually fix a culvert, um, and don't know what happened to that expertise. So, Mark?
So the answer to your first question is yes. The answer to your second question is retirements. Um,
The first one wasn't a yes or no, it was, why, why is it?
You know, the, the answer that I think the, I think what I was saying yes to is that the, you know, your understanding was that the expertise existed in-house. And the answer is yes, it did. Um, but again, remember, this was five or six years ago at this point, you know, the road started
You've been talking about this as long as I
Road started to collapse, metal plate was put in the road and the metal plate continued to hold and we continued to just do nothing. You know, we probably could have done this hindsight being twenty-twenty, you know, six years ago, we could have done it for about forty thousand dollars in-house. You know, and, and we, and we decided at that point that forty thousand was more important to take out of the budget and not put in as a capital item at that point. And, you know, we continued to move forward with the steel plate. Steel plate was holding. There was no issues, no issues out of sight, out of mind, and continued to move forward and just kept deferring the item down the road until the plate collapsed as well. Um, and the road around it collapsed. So we're at the point now we have to fix it, you know, we're in a, we're in a really bad um, market for bidding for things, especially pipe. It's very hard to get any kind of pipe these days. Um, and I think that, you know, that, that, the, the climate we're in is driving, is driving the increases, but happy to have the engineer take a look and see if there isn't another path that they feel might be more viable to give us a better chance of, um, of getting better bids, you know, for this.
Okay, so I think we've got a plan to at least try to get it resolved. So everybody agree?
Okay, all right, that's North Borough Road, um. Eagle Scout report?
That's mine. Um, just quickly, I had the pleasure of attending an Eagle Scout Court of Honor for a Nathaniel boy who, uh, was troop ninety-two, uh, was awarded the Eagle, merit, the Eagle Award. And, um, very good ceremony and, uh, well attended. And, uh, again, a pleasure to do. Uh, turns out Southborough, uh, has extraordinarily large proportion of Eagle Scouts, uh, for reasons that are not perfectly well understood, but, uh, through the, the troops in town, they turn out far greater percentage of Eagle Scouts than national average, which is something like two or three percent. Uh, we do a lot better and kudos to the various troops, the scouts, the troop leaders, the families. Um, it's great, great, uh, experience for the participants and, uh, look forward to doing more of those. I think there's another one scheduled, uh, very soon here, uh, for, uh, troop one, I think it is. So good thing to do, and I encourage anybody who hasn't attended those ceremonies to consider it.
What was his project?
He did, uh, a, a number of, uh, kiosk and birdhouses at the Breakneck Hill, uh, uh, conservation area. Uh, some of those things had fallen into disrepair and it was a lot of work. And, uh, Joyce Greenleaf of the stewardship committee was there to summarize the, the project and express their appreciation for the, the good work there. So those are the kind of things, again, that don't get a lot of visibility, but, uh, the folks who use those areas, um, are, are again, very appreciative of those kinds of projects.
Right, um. Mr. Town Administrator?
Madam Chair, I will, given the lateness of the hour, I'll be brief, but it's a brief item anyway. I just wanted to give the board um, heads up, we are in appointment, uh, reappointment season. And so at the next meeting, um, we normally break up the appointments and from into staff appointments and then board and committee appointments. So at the next meeting, um, you'll be getting a list of the staff appointments. Um, and, uh, also for your, for your consideration for approval. At the same time, we're going to try to give you at least a draft list of the board and committee appointments so that you can understand, um, uh, what we're looking at for reappointments, what we're looking at for vacancies. Um, this office is sending out things to, um, to current board and committee members whose terms are expiring to see if they'd like to continue, also reaching out to the chairs of the committees, um, to understand whether or not, you know, there's any issues we should be aware of, as long as, you know, people are making meetings productive, you know, on the boards and committees, and there's nothing we should be aware of when making these reappointments. Um, so start to get, filter that information to you, uh, for your next meeting. And hopefully on the fourteenth, the board can wrap up your appointments. There's always some stragglers and, um, but we'll continue to start advertising for, uh, for some of the vacancies as well. See if we can't fill as many as we can before June thirty.
Okay, thank you. Um, consent agenda. So before we vote on this, um, I just got a couple of questions, um, because I don't know the answers. Um, why is the, why do we have to accept the donations from schools? Um, you know, we do it at town meeting, you do it here. Wha- wha- what makes us do this?
The board, the board is required to accept all donations that are made to the town. So, you know, it, it's as small as the fifty dollar donation to the fire department. And, and, you know, as the donations that are given to us annually by Faye, New Center for Children, St. Mark's.
So state law just says you gotta do it.
It's, it's a, it's a procedural, it's just a procedural item.
I guess maybe if you've got someone, you don't want to accept something from because whatever. Okay, so why is Faye thirty? Have they already done the ten?
So Faye is, so the way that they're doing the, um, the sixty that we are getting is we're getting thirty now. And within the next fiscal year, prior to the end of, probably the middle of June next year, uh, we'll be getting the other thirty. So the full sixty for the vehicle we received in the same fiscal year. So, you know, the, uh, uh, finance director is comfortable. We can make that purchase uh, next year because we have that commitment.
I got that, but what about the other ten?
Uh, I don't know if the ten has come yet or it will be coming imminently.
It may have already come and maybe that's why it's thirty now.
Yeah, I'd have to go, I'd have to go back and take a look, to be honest with you.
But if they wrote the check for thirty now, you would think they do it for forty if they're still owed the ten. So we just should make sure we get the other ten.
Absolutely.
Right? Okay, um. So why is approving closeout of capital projects on a consent, consent agenda?
So this was, uh, uh, actually, this was something that probably Mr. Ballantyne, um, could have addressed, uh, at the meeting. Uh, I'm sorry, could have addressed while he was here for the other, um, uh, for the other piece um, of the, of the quarterly update. Um, so this is, there's a memo in your packet, um, to discuss the, um, uh, three capital projects that have been closed out. And the way that, uh, bond counsel, um, uh, has, has suggested that this be done is they're transferred then to the debt budget. And then what happens is they're not spent, so then they're closed out at that point to free cash. But this is the process is suggested. It's, it's again, it's a procedural item. I don't think there's a whole lot of, of issues about it. If this questions about it, we can always table it and we can handle it the next meeting.
Yeah, so therefore, okay, I'm okay. Um, everybody's okay with that one?
Kathy?
Yes.
Question, um, back on the, um, receiving, uh, approving gifts receipt. Um, I actually looked at that a couple of years ago. I couldn't find anything in state law that required us to do that. Is that something that I don't, don't know of any town bylaws that require that. Do you know where that comes from, Mark?
I don't know where it comes from, but I'd be happy to ask the question. Um, I think it's also that this, you know, one of the things too is that, um, you know, often we get, you know, you'll get a, we'll get a grant for something, we get a donation for something. And it's, um, it's, or, or it's a, it's a capital item, it's a, um, you know, it's a vehicle, it's a, you know, an ATV, you know, and, but, but at that point, it becomes part of our fleet. And, you know, the thought being that it simply then becomes next time we do something with it's a replacement item. And I think that, that, that it, it's kind of that the board gets to at least have some say in these things and make sure that you understand exactly what you're getting and what it means. It, that, that doesn't apply to the things that are on here tonight, but it allows you to be the gatekeeper, so to speak, on some of those things.
And maybe there's a policy in there that says any de minimis cash contribution, less than a hundred dollars or something, we designate you as the official receiver of that and bigger items or something, but that could streamline the process a little bit. I mean, I, I don't think worth our time to spend a lot of time, even as much as tonight.
I, I get all the important stuff, so I thank you for that. I get cemetery deeds and so, no, I'm, I'm, I'm fine to help streamline the process if, you know, um, and um, maybe, you know, can have the, the finance team take a look at that and see if there's anything prohibiting us from doing that.
Yeah, I, I want to see the hovercrafts. That's what I'm interested in, so.
We also want to make sure the donations go to the right place. To me, that's important is that, you know, they, they are done correctly and nothing's done incorrectly. Um, so, um, I could see that, but it just seems like, you know, for every fifty dollar ones, we got to say yes to, um, but whatever. Um, okay, let's see. So we're going to get rid of the noise bylaw committee. Um, so they did their job, it got approved, so that's a good thing. All right, so I, um, am just not going to vote on this at all because I don't want to vote on the minutes since I had nothing to do with those, but you got it, you got plenty of votes here.
Madam Chair, there's one thing I do want to point out, um, during the break, um, Ms. Hale had pointed out to me, item B. Um, those minutes were already approved at a prior meeting.
Good, yeah, I thought I remembered that.
Yeah, Mr. Stivers, I'm surprised you didn't mention that before I got to it, so.
So it's all yours.
So I'll hold item A, and I just have some corrections to this.
I also have corrections.
Okay, so, um, Chelsea, can you make this motion?
Sure. Um, so I'd move, uh, that we accept consent, uh, approve consent agenda items C, D, E, F, and G.
Second?
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Chelsea?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
A.D.?
Hi.
And I'll vote on this, so I, so five zero for items seven through G. Okay, um. But Chelsea, you want to handle, um, as vice chair, the minutes because I have nothing to do with these minutes and
Um, so any comments from April fifth, twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Sam.
Uh, line seventy-four actuarially is misspelled.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, Andrew?
He caught the one that I caught.
Okay, Lisa? April fifth, no, okay, uh, April twenty-sixth?
I've got one.
Yeah, go ahead, Sam.
Uh, line seventeen should be youth commission.
Yeah.
That's it.
And lines eighty-three, eighty-seven, and ninety, I think Dean's should be D-E-A-N-S instead of D-E-E-N-S.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Lisa?
Sam got mine.
Yeah, Andrew got mine. Okay, good. May fourth.
No comments.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes as corrected for April fifth, April twenty-sixth and May fourth?
So move.
Second.
Chelsea seconded. Roll call vote, Chelsea?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
A.D.?
Hi.
And I'll abstain, so four zero one.
Madam Chair, I just want to point out, um, that, you know, our, our minute taker, three meetings, that was twenty-one pages of written minutes, and you made like four corrections.
Pretty good.
They're outstanding.
And they were pretty minor corrections, too.
Yes.
We could have lived without them, certainly. So that's remarkable.
She does a great job.
Advisory's trying to hire her, too. We'll see.
And you're not hiring her?
No, you don't, uh, we've already, they've already asked and she has, we're not going to hire away from such force. Right?
It's so hard to find somebody to do the minutes and, and, you know, these, these meetings are becoming lengthy and detailed. And so someone who's willing to do them and can do them as well as she does, um, you hold on with both hands.
Okay, we're moving on. Other matters, M A P C vacancy, Lisa?
So as you see by the letter in the packet that the M A P C is requesting, there's currently a vacancy. It's a three-year term and they're looking for an elected or appointed official or resident who can effectively, effectively represent Southborough's interests. So, um, that's it. Up for discussion if there's any, any members of the board that are interested?
I've got a comment about this one. Um, I actually went back and tried to sort out, uh, sort of what organization is which here. And the M A P C is actually a, uh, a large organization, I think a hundred and one towns in the metropolitan area that, uh, again, looks at, uh, regional planning activities, et cetera. And I think it's, it's an important one to be a part of. We're one of the few on their list of towns that shows vacant in the position. I don't know how long that's been the case, but then they've subdivided into, I can't remember, ten regions or something. And we're part of the, uh, Metro West region or something. They're like seven or eight towns. And I think Mimi Latrell is the current, uh, participant in the regional piece. And it seems to me it's worth having representation on both levels. And, uh, I would argue that, uh, somebody from the planning board is a good candidate for the, um, the, um, larger region position. Um, unless somebody else on this board is interested in doing that, uh, I think it's useful for us to be part of that, but to me, it's, it's so strongly focused on planning kind of things that the planning board does. That would be, uh, uh, I think an appropriate appointment. I don't know if Mimi's eligible or interested in holding both positions or not, or somebody else on the planning board would be interested in one or both, and they could realign that, uh, as they might choose. But, uh, again, I, as I vaguely recall, this has come up previously for us and nobody seemed to jump at the chance. I'm interested in the planning process, but we had a full, pretty full calendar, so, um, not ready to volunteer for this one unless it, worst comes to worst, if nobody wants to do it and the planning board doesn't want to do it, I guess I would be willing to do this, but, uh, I think there's a better choice.
Oh, we've got two members of planning board that are in the audience listening to this. Um, so who, so select board appoints this one?
The town, I think, has to designate somebody that, that's what, that the, um, um, letter came to.
Okay, but what do you mean by towns? Select board, town administrator, who?
That's who the letter came to, I think.
Yeah, select board, the select board appoints a representative and in a perfect world, you appoint a representative and an alternate.
Okay, so does anyone have a problem with either Chelsea or I talking to the planning board as far as possibly doing this, starting there at least, giving them first dibs on this? Okay.
Right solution.
All right, and, okay, um, discussion of the Juneteenth holiday, Lisa?
So on this one, um, where I was actually, well, we're going to actually, uh, put this on for the thirty-first. Kathy, there's some additional information that, uh, Mr. Purple is working with the Chiefs on. Mark, is that accurate?
Uh, Chiefs as well as Labor Council. So yes, we'll come back for something a little more full formed, um, for the next meeting.
So what is it we're trying to form here?
I think the issue is, is that you have a state holiday and a federal holiday in Juneteenth. You have three collective bargaining agreements that were just funded for town meeting, which make Juneteenth the holiday effective July one of twenty twenty-two. You also have updates to the S A P bylaw that made Juneteenth the holiday effective July one, twenty twenty-two. Um, and we still have one union who has yet to ratify an agreement. Um, so there is nothing that is, that is pending, um, with that, although that was obviously one item that was on the table, as with every union. Um, how, how do we handle Juneteenth this year? And so that is, that is the discussion that I'm trying to work through, um, with the respective departments, um, primarily, um, public safety and DPW. And also, um, trying to work it through with Labor Council, just to make sure that we're not doing something that's going to, you know, appear to be a good thing and come back to bite us.
Okay, so we will resolve this on the thirty-first because we need to, if we're going to get it resolved, okay? All right. Okay, tree warden, Lisa?
All right, so, under tree warden, under the first item enforcement of interim tree policy, the, the board had, um, agreed and planning board had supported in interim policy while we decide on a path for tree warden. Um, one of the issues that has come up is enforcement on this, how it would be handled. So I had a brief discussion with, um, Ms. Latrell, uh, earlier today. Um, we're kind of mulling around a few things. I will bring something back for the board and she will bring something to planning board and get feedback on, but it's still in the initial stages, but I wanted the board to be aware that, um, you know, th- this is an issue. There's currently nothing in place now. Statute basically gives a fine, so we're trying to work out a, a better path. So that's really the, the update to that, that there'll be more information at a future meeting. So that's really the the update to that, that there'll be more information at a future meeting that I'll bring to you, that Ms. Latrell will bring back to planning board as well.
Okay.
And the future role of tree warden, I'm gonna punt this to Ms. Malinowski. This was an item that she had put on the agenda.
Thank you. Um, so I know we've had some preliminary discussions with planning board and advisory around the role of the tree warden going forward and what that means from a financial perspective. Um, so I was hoping that um one of the things that someone could work on in the short term is understanding from um the current tree ward- warden, how much time goes into um the tree hearings and um evaluating um trees, you know, at uh from an arborist perspective. I know he's not an arborist, but um at least having that perspective on what kind of time we're talking about. Um, and then try to put together some sort of plan for um how how we can formulate this role going forward. So our current tree warden is only through the end of June. Um, and I just want to make sure that we get the 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 wheels in motion to understand exactly what this role's going to have, and then hopefully report back to planning board as they um had agreed to move their tree bylaw out until the fall. And just making sure that those those two pieces are in sync so that we're not conflicting, are gonna create any um issues. And then figuring out the financial portion of it. So um, I had, I just asked to put this on the agenda just for discussion on, you know, if if anybody wants to work with Chris and figure out the path forward.
Chelsea, is this something you're interested in doing? I'm just curious.
No, I'm not interested. No.
Okay.
I mean, I would do it if some, but I I, no, I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of it because I think this was a big topic of discussion in the last couple of months, and I just want to make sure that we're moving forward.
Okay, so let's bring, Vanessa, can you bring over um Deb De Maria?
Chelsea, would that next step include looking at some of the cost options for a tree warden? Because I've I've had variety of uh input on that from folks in the landscaping tree business saying that the numbers that we've heard so far in terms of the hourly rates surprisingly high, so it'd be interesting to know what other options there might be.
I absolutely think that is, and I think that goes into the qualifications and the type of person that you're looking for. Like, do you want a tree warden who also works for a tree cutting company? I I think that's a policy decision, right? Like.
Conflict of interest.
Yeah, I, yeah, so I, you know, I'd like to, I I would like to understand too the price points of um what the options are.
Just just the rates, and and allegedly there are arborists or others who are qualified who don't work for tree companies out there who uh might be a a lower cost option that we have not found previously, and I'd like to ask that as well.
Can I just ask a process question here, and maybe Mark knows, so how the public bidding laws kind of go with this of where? Like, we're just kind of gathering information about how much things might cost. Does this raise any type of an issue of where you instead need to be going through a prescribed process of issuing an RFP to make sure that each person you talk to is is giving you information response of the exact same. Uh, I know there's a, what is it, the fifty thousand dollar threshold for multiple bidders? How does this play into this? Because.
Yeah, i- i- it's so it depends on the value of the contract of of what, you know, so the dollar, so you're correct when you, you know, with the dollar amounts. You're, you know, depending on the dollar amount, depends on how much process we have to do. Um, so.
So is there any concern about, like, because one of the things you might do here is, one of us picks up the phone, we get a recommendation who are from other towns, a list of four or five people, right, who are knowledgeable about this, and you just pick up the phone and you have a general conversation. You get these super ballpark estimates. Does that then raise an issue about now you've like talked to them and you've almost disqualified from them from bidding on a subsequent RFP? You know what I mean? Because you had a prior discussion with them about.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I don't, especially, so if if this board would, you know, is the one that needs to make the decision. I don't think that random board members should be going out and doing personal interviews, you know, with some of these companies and kind of get an idea of where they think you may want to be and, you know, um, that 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 that's starting to get, you know, really gray. So um, so I I think if we want to do a process, you know, we need, you know, we should, you know, we should respect the process. Um, and and again, if we're gonna put something out, you want to make sure what we're getting back is is apples to apples. So back to what Mr. Stivers, we were talking about. You know, whether or not we put out various options for the Northborough Road culvert. You know, no, we need to make sure everybody was giving us pricing based on the same set of specs, same set of criteria. So, you know, we're gonna have that expectation if we put out a formal request, or even if we do it informally, we want to make sure the pricing is reflective of the same thing.
So I just raised that because because it helps drive the process of how we find out this information, because to me, it's very important, and I think that one of the ways you complete the tree bylaw is to um find out how much it's, it just not, you know, we're gonna need to spend more than four thousand dollars for a stipend for a tree warden, if this.
Isn't that a given?
But how much more, right?
Right.
So that's the information that we that we want, so that the the fall town meeting, which is a policy decision, is gonna match up in some way with the next F Y twenty four budget that has a line item under, and then there would be a question, is it under the select board? Because where they appointing authority is under the D.P.W. Um, but there's gonna be a line item in the budget somewhere for this tree warden. It's an anticipated expense in the first year. We gotta make a best guess about how much it's gonna cost, and it's just gonna be.
You're gonna have to deal with it in fiscal year twenty three, too. Um, it may, you know, it's a special, um, as part of this, if there's to fund it.
I think, I think the bigger issue before we get into the money is the structure. You know, do you want a tree warden? And then do you want an arborist? Do you want your tree warden to be an arborist? You know, I, and 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 those things are gonna drive the discussion. I mean, right now, you've just got a stipend in the S.A.P. bylaw, you know, for tree warden, you know, do you, so I assume you're not gonna pay it as a stipend anymore. How are we gonna handle, you know, how do we want to handle this? I, so it's more important, I think, of how you want to structure it. And then we can talk about, you know, how we're gonna fund it, how we're gonna bid it, but structure's the first step.
Okay, I think they all move kind of in tandem, because we haven't decided on the fall time meeting yet. But another thing that was a a lesson from the, I mean, I think the very successful effort with the downtown zoning is the summer thing is kind of slowed down, and the next six weeks are the time where one of the most important steps take place. So it's something we can do to to get some just ballpark ballpark numbers of how much this might cost without running afoul of any type of a public bidding issue through uh direct contact potential. Maybe it's just getting information from other towns. On how much, how how they spend and what kind of budgets they set.
But again, it's how it's, you know, I come back to how is it set up, you know, so I mean, if you want to look at other towns and how they set, you know, how they handle, you know, tree services and tree warden, you know, then you can get an idea of how they do it. And you can say, yeah, the majority of them do it this way. We'd feel comfortable doing it this way. Okay, then we can get an idea. Am I out, are we looking for pricing for just an arborist? Are we looking for pricing for an arborist and a tree warden? Uh, you know, that that's, I I I think that's the most important thing, but I'll I'll defer to the board.
Well, someone's got to take the lead on giving the information. Um, advisory started looking at this, and we came up with numbers that were all over the place um as far as what the cost was, really crazy high numbers and then more reasonable numbers. So, Mark, can you not take charge of this as far as talking to fellow our towns around us and seeing what we can come up with as far as both numbers?
Sure, I'm happy to, you know, I I think I'm I'm happy to to see how other people are doing it. You know, how other people are handling their tree services and and the structure. And then you can make some, you know, you can make some decisions off of that. So, yep, happy to, happy to pull that together.
And I think with that information, how much money they spend, because I agree, Mark, that the two are interrelated, the structure and the getting the budget. But the first year can, it can be kind of a educated guess, like if if at the end of either F Y twenty three or F Y twenty four, um, we say, whoops, this number was way too high or way too low. I wouldn't be all that bent out of shape about it, but there just needed to be something because one problem with the last town meeting was there was just no alignment between those two at all. We had no, we had no idea, and we were just gonna, um, here, we just want to get some type of an idea.
Yep.
So, hi, Deb.
Hi, everybody. Debbie's Maria fifty eight Flag Road. Well, actually, Southbrow has some experience with it, um, with the cost. So if you remember back in nineteen ninety one, I guess it was, um, when the different departments, cemetery, tree, highway, um, collapsed into the D.P.W., we actually had a tree warden that we paid. And so if you go back to the nineteen ninety one um town meeting minutes, um, there was discussion about uh twenty two thousand dollars that were paid to the tree warden, and I think that town meeting actually lowered that person's salary to twenty one thousand. Um, so I mean, it's a little bit dated, but you can probably imagine that number is maybe forty or sixty thousand or something like that today. And it's not really even clear if that was a a full-time position. That might have even been a part-time position. But I don't think this inform, I mean, I think if we're looking at um a contractor, you're gonna get very, very inflated prices, and that's what we have. I think I heard, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour or something like this. If you're hiring a contractor, they're gonna be really high prices. And I mean, I I think the thing of it is that um, this this appears to me that um, we have a lot of catch-up to do. I personally don't even know if it's a full-time position, because we have all these tree reports. There's no reason why the current interim tree warden isn't going to those tree war- tree reports and bringing those trees to a public uh hearing, that work has already been done for that person. There's, as you know, a lot of trees on the, I think, five different tree reports. So, um, you know, I think that we'll have some catch-up to do, because really not a lot's been done in the last couple of years. But I I am not sure whether the position would be full-time or not. But, you know, whatever twenty thousand dollars was in nineteen ninety one, that's gotta be forty thousand, maybe sixty thousand now. Um, another resource that we have is um, I had a chat with um Alba Zanson, whose daughter teaches arboriculture at UMass Amherst, and she teaches arborists. She teaches future arborists, and so she's also very connected. And, you know, he, you know, kind of kindly offered that, you know, you can call the school and find out they're teaching the next generation of arborists. Um, and that's what these people do. They become tree wardens. And so there's another, um, you know, sort of wealth of information. Um, to find out, you know, what kind of skills they have, what kind of courses they take, because I think that, you know, this is all part of that conversation. But I do think that the hourly rates that are coming all over, like Kathy, like you say, they're all over the place. I I think that's what you're gonna get if you if you ask different um tree companies, what do they charge hourly? But if we're thinking about a permanent uh or part-time position, um, I I think the rates could be much more reasonable, and that person would also be vested in our town, not just in cutting down, you know, dead trees, but also care for the ones um that are alive. So I think that we have some of this information inside of our town already.
So Deb, can you give us the name of the um um teacher at UMass?
Yes, yeah, I will. Yeah. And I think that's a good place to start, because, you know, there must be like job boards there also, maybe. Um, because, you know, as I said, they're teaching the next generation. Um, but I'd be happy to do that.
This is a point of reference, the CPI increase from ninety one to twenty twenty two is about double, so twenty grand then, it's about forty grand now.
Oh, good, Sam. I I kind of wondered that, and that to me sounds like it might have been a part-time position. I don't know. I I've not asked anybody who was around back then, but um, you know, I I I seem to think we probably could have a part, at least start with a part-time position, and as I, as you know, also, there are about five um tree, uh, what are the comms? Tree reports for the various streets, right? They cover about those eighteen roads. Um, and where a hired arborist, um, the guy out of Smithfield, Rhode Island, was um, has already done that work. So really, I mean, I think that some of that stuff needs to be adjudicated. Um, because, you know, he was recommending that, you know, trees that had like two trees off of one trunk should be cut down. I mean, if we're just, if you're trying to save money, you just want to cut down the dead trees, there's a lot of work that could be done. There's no reason why the current tree warden can't put those trees forward and get things started. Um, you know, with the consolidated tree hearings, if they're on um, you know, on the public way. I don't know what this has to do with cutting the the cost to cut down the trees. This is just the cost of, um, you know, what it might take to hire a tree warden. Yeah, but I'd be happy to do that, Kathy.
Deb, while you're here, um, did you hear the discussion about membership or on the M.A.P.C.?
I did. I did. I had, I I did have a conversation with Mimi, and I think that might be, um, you know, she wants to make sure that all the um, you know, members are uh on various committees, so if Mimi's still on um, or not, I can, I can bring it back to Mimi.
Right, she is. Okay, so thank you. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
All right, so what would you guys like to do as far as trying to truly um put together a plan to make sure we're ready for all aspects of this article? When we get to the fall special?
Thank you.
Well, the first step is um just getting some of this general information that we're talking about from other towns that Mark has uh offered to do. Debbie, that was good information about that, you know, historical um spend on the tree warden previously. Um, I mean, I even think just that number is really helpful and trying to think of what could be a, just a ballpark to put into the budget. I mean, this is also really, we did have some very productive, they were, there were joint hearings, right, with advisory and planning, I think. Where we got really into the weeds of the details, so I don't think there's that much more um work that needs to be done. Um.
Okay, so I'll work with Mark, and we will put together um um a packet of information that hopefully will include what we need to understand what this position should look like and understand its impact on the budget.
Yeah.
And I like Chelsea's suggestion of of talking with the current tree warden to get a better picture of exactly what kind of work effort.
I agree, it's a good place to start.
Yes, yeah, it's another useful piece of data.
That made it sound like she was at that nineteen ninety one town meeting, too. Um, so anyway, um, that was, that was good info. I don't think anybody was there in this group. Um, okay, um, so enough of that for the moment. Um, so before we adjourn, um, to go back to the meeting schedule, we're gonna have to decide on the date of a special town meeting sooner or than later, I would think. Um, you know, summer goes by fast, right? Um, we're only gonna meet a couple times, so I would think that we're gonna need to put this on the agenda for May thirty first to try to um at least um start talking about the date. Possibility has asked us to move it up from last one. He thought November one was too late for what he needs to do, so he is requesting it to be at least a month earlier, maybe six weeks earlier, so he can get his job done. Um, and a normal process of, we should ca- take that into account, but I think we've got to get this done so we can plan accordingly because it will fly by, as we know. Anybody disagree with that?
Oh, wow, we're uh actually, no, I don't want to, this is an idea which, I don't know, it's not really on the uh agenda, but is related to the organization for the special town meeting and gets to in something that Sam raised right before the last town meeting closed, but maybe I'll talk to him and then um see if we can um see if it's something that should be on the next agenda in role that relates to the um special time meeting.
So you're just gonna leave us hanging?
I don't even remember what that was, Andrew.
Okay, well, it has to do with um, you know, when the warrant closes, right? Remember, you raised that good point, okay?
Yep. And and I had proposed a possible warrant article to make that work better administratively, so that might be something we consider again.
Yes, it did change, didn't it? Okay, um, I think that's it unless everyone, unless somebody disagrees.
We have one, we have one more agenda item.
And, eh, actually, Chelsea, that, I was just on that one. I'm going to, I'm going to, um. Pull that, I want to get some additional information and I'll do it as a, as the.
That's a resident complaint for?
Yeah, I just, so I had initial conversations with Karen regarding, uh, there, there's a list of. Residents that are concerned whether it be a hazard tree or not. We were just working to put a process in place to start addressing those. So again. We could start moving forward to see how that process works with town meeting and part of that's, you know, having the arborist do the reports on the trees. And having a planning board member participate in that as well, but I'm still waiting. I thought of a couple of other things I wanted to add to that, so I will do an update on that at a future meeting.
Okay, so I have to you to put it back on?
I will.
Okay. All right, so with that, I think we're done. All right. Okay, any more public comment? Mr. Lit would like to come over?
I, I know you all want to go home. But I did have a comment on the dissolution of the noise by law committee. Um, they did what you asked. I mean, they came up with a bylaw and we managed to, to get it passed and I think that's, that's all a good thing. But in the process, you know, they also. Uh, uncovered a bunch of other applicable statutes and regulations that have to do with how noise gets. Reported, managed, enforced and all that. Um. The Board of Health is working on a policy for how they plan to enforce. But I think there's also a need for, you know, a user's guide that says, you know, sort of, where do you turn? Given that you have all these, these choices and, 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 uh, scenarios. And so my concern is that. I don't want to have all of the knowledge that the members of the noise by law committee. Uh, pulled together, just disappear before it somehow gets captured and, and put into something. I've been sort of calling a user's guide, but you can pick your own name for it. I mean, if I'm a resident, I'm not going to read a bylaw, I'm not going to read statutes and I'm not going to read a policy, but I sure could use. You know, something that says, um, how do I deal with a noise issue? You know, if it's this, go here, if it's that, go there and so on. Um, I mentioned it at a noise by law committee meeting and, you know, they thought it was outside their current remit. And I've also mentioned it at, at the Board of Health and I haven't seen that happen. So in any case. I, I'd like to have, you know, the select board as well thinking about this. Because, you know, having driven us to a bylaw. It sure would be nice. To help. Residents solve their problems. Not just have something we can enforce. So that's my, I, my two cents for the evening.
Good point, and the message I got was they, they clearly think they're done. We might be able to convince one or two of them to actually put some thoughts down about that.
There's two of them in the attendees right now.
Yep.
Well, I mean, they are done. We voted to dissolve them.
Yep, yep.
That was Kathy, I may, that was at their request.
They requested it.
So they did, yeah.
Sure, I mean, I think it's fair, you know, in that they discharged. Their charter, right? They did what you asked them to do. And that's, that's that. What I'm observing is that they also collected a bunch of other valuable stuff. That we shouldn't be throwing out. Without thinking about it.
Yep. Good to follow up on.
Vanessa, can you bring over Mr. Milo? Hi there. Are we going to see you?
Maybe not. Sorry, I was muted twice. Uh, thank you for bringing me over and thank you for dissolving. Our committee. That means I can go drink now with our, the, the other committee members. Um, uh, you did dissolve it, but I am still committed to, um, do with this citizen just mentioned, which is. How do we market the new information to our citizens as well as to the contractors and the landscapers? Because we just passed the bylaw, but. The landscapers don't know that this is enacted and so forth, so, um, we'll be, I will be personally following this and soon as the attorney general, um. Uh, you know, approves everything and with your permission, make sure that we take this to the last mile, so.
Okay, so we've heard from both of you. Thank you.
Yep. Thanks. And we will have a few months here where the AG reviews things.
We will. Okay, I see no further public comment. Um, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Roll call vote, Chelsea.
Hi.
Lisa.
Hi.
Sam.
Hi.
AD.
Hi.
Cook is I, so five zero.